Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of June 10th, 2015. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing after the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason why I asked everybody to stand is we lost a patrol officer this week. A son, a brother, patrol officer, and a friend. And sometimes there's kind words said about someone when they pass, and then there's sometimes there's heartfelt kind words. And this gentleman was one of those, with that heartfelt kind. Everyone had, at any contact with him, had nothing but wonderful things to say. He's going to be sorely missed. I'd like to have a moment of silence if everybody would, and I'm going to ask the chief if he wouldn't mind sharing a few words about him. Chief?
Chief. Good evening, and thank you very much, Chairman Corral. If I could, absolutely, those words were very, very well spoken on your behalf. Officer Richard Jean George is a three-year veteran of the department. May 2012, he joined our force. Outstanding individual, as you said. In my 30-year career here, I don't think, I've had many officers that will be able to fit his description. No one's ever come to me in the department or on the street and had anything negative to say about him. He walked around with a smile, greeted the public, on duty, off duty, just an outstanding, phenomenal individual. Unfortunately, he was vacationing with his family and friends in Costa Rica over the weekend. His brother was in the water, had some difficulty in the water. He jumped in the water to attempt to save him, being that type of individual he was. He was taken out to sea under current, pulled him out. His brother was brought to shore by a surfer and revised. However, Richard stayed out to sea for several days. I received a call on Sunday from his father, who was received, who had received some information, was heading that way Monday with his family. At that point, I met with the department, informed them of the information I had, did make several calls to the Costa Rican authorities, and asked if we could do anything for him in any way. They accepted us with open arms. We did send a small contingency of officers there for support for his family first and foremost, and to assist them with any type of function or duty that they needed. Unfortunately, yesterday afternoon, he, his body was located approximately five miles offshore on the Pacific side of the Costa Rica island. He was brought to shore, and he's there now with his family until the body can be released and brought back to our state. I will inform you, along with the town people, at any given time that I receive that information, on any information we have with him. But again, he'll be sadly missed. I will tell you that I also would like to thank all the citizens of the community for their outstanding support. I can tell you, we received flowers, cards, pizzas, cakes, fruit, you name it. It was kind of real busy in our lobby. I think Channel 10, 12 have been camped out there, and 6 for a while, and I think they were kind of amazed on what was coming through the front door. As you can imagine, I've made one or two statements, but I'm limiting what we're going to say and do until we get all our facts and everything in order as we normally do here in Bristol, because I think we owe it to the officer and his family. But I can tell you, the outpour of support and condolences from the community and the law enforcement community, I cannot tell you. I'm overly impressed, along with all my officers. So thank you very much for giving me the time to speak on behalf of the department. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Our hearts obviously go out to his family, his close friends, and obviously his coworkers and yourself, who are really close to him. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion. This is motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, Mr. Chairman, we received correspondence from two of your petitioners this evening, Mr. Tisker and Ms. Hanos. This would be Agenda Items F5 and H4. They have, both asked that those items should be withdrawn.
Thank you. Do you need a motion or other?
No, not necessary. The next item is the submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A1 and A2.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item is MC1. This is a second reading for adoption of ordinance 2015-7, as previously discussed. This would be to amend the deadline for council docket submissions.
Might I ask how that worked out for you this first week?
Well, it's not adopted yet, so.
Oh, I thought it was.
So not well.
We'll let you know next time.
Well, I think it's a little bit of an inconvenience to us, but I think it makes sense because of giving you time to put it all together. And you should reduce the number of late items, I think.
Well, that's, that's, that's the goal, and certainly, you know, we'll do our best to do as many accommodations as possible, and make sure that everything does get to you on time.
Well, we do a second reading and passage of the resolution.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that with just a comment that this will be new, and we'll just see how this trial goes, and we can always change it after.
Before we vote on that, just a point of clarity is that the current deadline is Friday at 1:00 before the council meeting, so this past Friday would have been the deadline for this council meeting, and that has been moved back to Wednesday at 4:00. So about a day and a half back. And the idea behind that is that as we sit here and look at documentation, hopefully we're not looking at documentation for the first time, so we can make an informed decision when applicants are in front of us for whatever it may be. So it'll give us more time, and also give Lou, his staff, and of course, department heads and the administrator, more time to give us the information we need to make an informed decision. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is another ordinance, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. This is ordinance 2015-08. This is, was also previously discussed, and essentially takes out the drain layer portion of our, of our town code, since the drain layers are now licensed specifically by the state.
So with the licenses now being under the state, under different criterias that still have to be met with the town ordinances, I make a motion to passage and adopt ordinance 2015-8.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is ordinance 2015-09, and this has to do with the parking of certain motor vehicles in residential zones overnight. This is the second reading for adoption. Based upon the previous council discussion, the solicitor provides a further clarification of the types of vehicles that would be prohibited under the, the new wording of the ordinance.
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I've had a lot of second thoughts about this, and I wonder what is the reason why we're trying to make this change, which is quite an extreme notification from the previous type of vehicles that were allowed?
I think I can answer some of that, and maybe it'll answer all of it, which was the current ordinance was written that any vehicle that is commercial, that is, one ton or more, would be subject to no overnight parking. And the issue there is that every vehicle on the road today is over one ton. So even your smallest vehi, well, I'm sure there's a few out there that, that are under that two-ton mark, excuse me, 2,000-pound mark, but I would say that your Corollas and Camrys and all those vehicles are actually way more than this minimum tonnage. So this tonnage brings it from the one that it was to seven that is proposed, and that seven-ton coincides with federal guidelines, if my memory is correct, after speaking with our code compliance officer, Ray Falco.
Well, my car, which is a particular residential car, weighs 4,500 pounds. I don't understand going to 14,000. Is it 14,000?
Yes. Yeah, seven tons was the magic number the federal government came up with, and it looks as though, yes.
Class C.
Yep, class C, and that with Mike Rosillo, our town solicitor, it looks like he said basically UPS and FedEx trucks and vans are a good idea of what is seven tons and more. And for point of clarity on this, too, is that this is gross vehicle weight, and that means, of course, the vehicle itself, plus it being fully loaded. So if it was completely full to its maximum capacity, it would weigh those seven tons or more.
Well, let me ask you this, if I may. If you live in a quiet residential street, do you want a UPS-type vehicle? Do you want a industrial truck and so forth? Modifying the kudos and serenity of the, of the location?
No.
Because I'm just worried this is going to open up a possibility of a good many trucks and various things going around town and being in the nuisance to people.
I agree with you, and in fact, it would preclude UPS and those larger trucks from parking. They could not do it. But there are certainly vehicles that are lesser weights that could. For example, I got a couple of calls in regards to this and these conversations, and it included landscapers, landscapers with six-wheel trucks, which is, of course, two in the front, sorry, two in the front, four in the back, and they were concerned about overnight parking and parking in the driveway. Something to keep in mind here is that the, the enforcement of this would require, obviously, a weight, number one. And number two is that we're talking, I think what the idea, and someone can correct me if they disagree, but this is to keep 18-wheelers out, this is to keep that kind of, of vehicle from, in our residential area. Does that make sense?
Well, I can certainly understand and accept the need to bring up to date the apparent inaccuracy of the current ordinance, but I wonder if we need to go to the extreme of moving up from an ordinary car to 14,000 pounds. Seems to me that is a little too much.
I think the other thing I could share is that this coincides with the home occupancy weight, too, for a vehicle that, for example, as I used earlier with the landscaping trucks, this would coincide with what our lands, sorry, our home occupation ordinance says that, which is seven tons or less. So I, I'm not opposed to conversation on this, I'm just sharing the information that was shared with me.
Well, I was just going to comment, and my concerns, the last meeting on this, was obviously we have to do something to correct the existing ordinance, because it's wrong. So the correction of the 1,000 or the one-ton wording in our ordinance has to be changed to cover all existing vehicles to be on the road. My concern, looking at not only the parking ordinance that is on the books, but also, as you mentioned, the home occupation, and our code compliance officer, that once this goes forward, not to deter any business owners such as landscapers or whatnot, but they have to understand that by passage of this, that doesn't mean that, you know, if they have one truck, now all of a sudden, they add three trucks, part of their business, that we have to still enforce our home occupation in front of our zoning ordinances that exist, and they be mindful of that, because I just don't want to see this, also with Halsey's concerns, get out of hand in neighborhoods just because of this change. This change should be to correct what was needed to be corrected, but not disrupt off-street parking for residents of what they're entitled to by our existing ordinances. So it's good to change ordinances, but not preclude the existing ordinances and take a lot away from them. So that's my concern.
May I suggest something? If, if we were to follow along with the suggestions of the code compliance officer, also in keeping with the home occupation ordinance, may we, maybe we do a review in six months or a year, not a sunset, but a review, and say, how's it working? And if it is non-successful, if we have lots of issues with that, then we change it.
Right.
But I hear your concerns, and I, I agree to.
I just feel you should be mindful to convey that to the town and residents because of this change, and that way, like you said, with your suggestion, it will suit the purpose. Thank you.
I agree with you. I agree with my colleagues, and Halsey, I appreciate your, your comment on this one. I completely agree with you. My understanding is it's maybe a little bit just simple, it's just bringing up to date, because some of these pickup trucks tend to be, they weigh a lot more now, today, so that the ordinance is out of date, and we need to just bring it up to date, so it allows those sort of pickup trucks and, to be able to stay overnight. But the ones that are exceeding the 14,000 pounds, then they would not be able to, you know, obviously, stay overnight. So I, I think it's just taking it out.
My thought is that maybe we need to compromise here, that if we pass the ordinance, maybe we can reduce the number 14,000 to something a little less. Even if that required another three weeks to examine further.
You thinking of class three, maybe 10,000? You looking class two?
We'll go to class two.
No, actually, I think Councilman Threw's correct, is if class three would include 10,000 to 14,000?
10,000 and more is 14,000.
So I think if you wanted 10,000, it would be class two.
So why don't we do this? If, if, is there a, what's this council's pleasure? If we're, if we'd like to put this off to the July 8th meeting, what information do you need that would help you feel comfortable at a different weight class?
Well, if I might submit a possible amendment to the ordinance that's currently written, I would like to move as an amendment that we change to allowing either class one or class two vehicles, which in effect would be a limit on 10,000 pounds rather than 14.
How would that exist? Go ahead, chief.
If possible, I don't think, this circled my, my desk. Could you give me your next council meeting, and I'll see what other communities are doing, and let's see how much of a real problem we're having here? I don't want to be premature and give you any bad data or information, so if you can wait another council meeting.
Of course we can.
I'll, I'll look to see what other communities are doing comparable to ours, and let's see if this really is a major problem, and maybe we may be able to meet in the middle, like Mr. Harrisoff's saying.
Maybe you could also share with us, Mike gave us a couple of examples, maybe a couple more examples of where that, you know, what we're talking about when it's 10,000, and what we're talking about when it's 14,000, just examples. There's a couple of, of quick pictures here, but maybe something a little bit more on the clearer end.
Yeah. I think, I think you were heading down the right street by saying that the vehicles now are larger vehicles, and that's a concern, as Mr. Sweeney said. So I think, again, I think the safest thing is, let's take a temperature of what the other communities are doing, and let's see what the call for service here, and let's evaluate it. Like that, I can report back to you and say we've had 10 calls in different parts of the community, because this might be, and I don't want to go out and say this, but this might be, right, one neighborhood, as we know, once in a while, there's one street or two streets that are having a problem with a neighbor, and then we blanket the whole town with something that really is not justified.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with that very good advice, I would step back and move that we continue this matter to the next meeting.
Second?
Thank you.
So we have a motion and continue in a second. All in favor?
I think you have a comment.
Oh, there's a comment. I'm sorry, before we vote on that?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, Nathan. I just figured I'd help you out.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Michael Camello, 11 Masterson Lane in Bristol.
Hi, Mike.
I can tell you what Warren does, because I own a business, I would say I know. Their requirement is you can park a truck in a trail, for example, on the road, but you must remove that vehicle within a 24-hour time period. So in other words, if you park a truck in a trail on the road, and someone makes a call, they're going to note it. If that person makes another call, and the officers know that, a certain time that they were contacted because that vehicle was there, and they're still there, they get cited. So I'm just giving you some information.
Do you know what class that is? I mean, because you said, like, if there was a, like, a large, like, an 18-wheeler or something.
Well, here's where I think you have to be careful, where the confusion comes in from what my experience is, is you're going to go by the weight class, but you also be careful with wording on the side of the vehicle. You know, if something is business-related, because some of these guys kind of get away with it, they get around it by not lettering their trucks. So people kind not to really, you know what I mean? It's like, it's business-related, but in their heads, they're thinking, well, Mrs. Johnson across the street is not going to pick up that this is business-related, because there's nothing on the truck. So that's where I think the weight class has to be stringent as well. So that way, there's no loophole.
Because I think the purpose of this particular ordinance, or at least the way I look at it, is an opportunity to enforce moving it if the need arises, not necessarily go looking for it, but that's a good point that we should consider, too.
Well, you know, you always have, and you can understand, I mean, you have a neighborhood, you know, residential neighborhood, and you've got this one person, for whatever reason, is parking that vehicle in, in the driveway or on the road, you know? I understand, it's always been a concern of mine. I never wanted to run a business out of a residential area because of that reason, because if you go ahead and you put up a garage, or you do whatever, you really can't do that, because if Mrs. Johnson across the street doesn't like it, she's going to make one full call, and guess what? Whatever I invested on my property to do what I wanted to do is right down the toilet, and that's totally understandable. I mean, you shouldn't be able to run a business out of a residential area. That's my view. But, again, I just figured I told that information out there.
Thank you. Did you want to add something, Diane?
Just to chime in, I think you mentioned earlier that we have the home occupation ordinance, and I think that some of this is because there was a conflict between two, two of the ordinances.
We're skirting around this, yeah. This was a particular issue that this all popped from.
I think that's what brought it to the council, and I think that the chief is right to research it, and I can work with him just to make sure that if you do go forward, it's consistent with the zoning on the home occupation, and we don't end up with another conflict.
I hear everyone saying that we don't want to allow something that we don't want, really. We want to make sure that things work correctly, so, great. So we have a motion and a second to continue to our next meeting on July 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for the input, too.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, this is ordinance 2015-10. This is the first reading for the new version of the tax stabilization ordinance.
I want to congratulate you for taking a very overly lengthy ordinance and reducing it to what really matters. I think it's, as far as I can tell, well-written. I tried to look at the details, and I don't have any suggestions.
Ladies and gentlemen, no, I'm kidding. Just kidding.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Thank you.
I only have one, and actually, it's a, it's a tiny one, and it's, it has to go to the E procedure, number one, and it's a simple one. It's an application for tax stabilization shall be submitted to the Department of Community Development prior to the building permit and at being issued. That's it. But everything else is, Halsey said, this is excellent.
Yeah. Diane, I concur with Halsey, it's, it's great, and I just had one op, one question, and that is, where do I get the application? Is it online? Where do you, where does someone get that application?
Yes, it is online.
Awesome.
Yes.
Awesome. Home run.
So is there a motion in regards to first reading?
Yes, I would move the first reading for the ordinance 2015-10.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I just had a discussion.
Absolutely.
I just, I'm going to support this, because it's been a long time in coming, and, and it is much simpler, so that's a great thing. So thank you on that. But I, I do want to just state that I, I disagree with this coming to the council. I really think that it should be an administrative tool for the, excuse me, for the EDC, and for the administrator, and the EDC official that we're thinking about hiring. And I couldn't, you know, last week, I guess it was, we had a workshop about what that job description should look like, and as I was sitting through that meeting and listening to people, it became clearer to me that it needed to be administrative, and, and as a tool. And then I was just hearing some commentary on my way home tonight, as far as the state budget, and what the tools that the Commerce Secretary will be getting. And so I think that the point is, if it's going to be a tool, then it needs to be a tool that people can count on, that they can bank on, and then they can not have to wait to come to the council meeting, not have to wait in case there's some questions, and it goes back, and now you've, you're three or six weeks out. So I, I think that, you know, you had presented us with both versions at the last meeting. I do prefer that one, but I would support this, just to get this moving, because it's been kind of on hold for a very long time.
Well, and to that end, I think we can all do our part to make sure that we expedite it as much as possible. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of Deborah Ventrees, doing business as Zenabelle, 573 Hope Street, requests council consideration for a vitaling license. She have recommendations provided by the town administrator, water pollution control department, the fire department, and also all request, all suggesting approval, excuse me.
Lou, I'd like to combine one and two, just for the purposes of discussion, since they're directly connected with each other, it's the same applicant. Again, obviously, we need two different votes, I know, but just to put it all together.
Okay.
I would like to comment on that, if I may. Mr. Chairman, I, I know that we all predicted, when we allowed sidewalk dining to two good establishments, that that would open the floodgates, and the fact that it has, it's all right. But I wonder if it isn't a good policy for us to not do that immediately. In other words, perhaps a new place should first get its vitaling license and acquire at least a few months of track record before we take the additional step. I mean, we, we have no obligation to immediately do it, but I think, on the other hand, of course, as we always do, we want to be even-handed.
Well, I think the thing is that we want to hear, I want to hear what the project is, because there's just one reference to a sign in the drawings that says juice bar. So they're asking for a food license, but there's no explanation of what it is that you're looking to do, except for that one diagram, so.
Welcome.
My name is Deborah Ventress. I own Zenabelle. I'll be in business three months, I mean, three years, August 30th. Part of our business plan was, at some point, to bring a raw juice bar into the store. We've gotten approvals from everyone, from the Department of Health, right through HDC for our, all we're doing is replacing signage. So we are looking to put three small bistro tables outside the juice bar to, you know, allow patrons who purchase juice to sit and enjoy their juice outside. So if anyone knows that building, and knows what I've done to that building in the past three years, what it looked like before I actually took that building over, you're nodding your head, yes.
I think we all are.
So if you saw, and if you remember, and you know what that building looks like, I think that anyone here would probably know that I'm not going to do anything that's going to detract from downtown Bristol.
I don't have a problem with the, the tables outside, I just wanted to know what the project was. I mean, you know, just because there was not a little narrative, a few sentences of what you were doing, that's all.
I didn't think that was appropriate for this meeting. All am asking for the tables.
Well, you're asking for a license to sell food. Is it, you're not asking for the table, you're, you're asking, you have two petitions in here?
Correct.
One is for the, am I correct, Lou?
Yes, yes, two petitions.
One is for...
One's for food and beverage license, and the other is for the sidewalk use license.
Tables. You have two petitions, separate, so that, so my question's not about the tables, mine's on, mine was on D1, that was about what food, what you're going to be doing as far as your plan, if you were having seating inside, that's all I was curious about.
There will be two tables inside, just two high tops with, with stools, and all it is, is going to be raw, organic juice, smoothies, that's all we're going to be doing.
Deborah, I'm in, I'm in support of the vitaling license and your sidewalk use request. I just wanted to know, are you changing from cosmetics to juice, or are you still doing both?
No, we're, we're a holistic apothecary. We do health and beauty products.
Yep.
So we carry everything from vitamins, supplements, herbs, body care, hair care, makeup, it's all natural, and so the juice bar was always part of my original business plan. I just recently got funding from the SBA to actually go ahead and do this expansion, so, thank goodness, we are doing very well.
I was just going to ask you that. It has nothing to do with license, just our own edification. How is business?
Yeah. We have been doing extremely well. I have so much support from local Bristolians and people that come from about 60 miles away. I bring a lot of people downtown.
Fantastic.
That's good to hear.
We thank you for staying in Bristol and being successful, and actually expanding, and just looking what you need to keep your business...
and just looking what you need to keep your business growing and growth.
My goal is to buy a building in the next year.
My only, my only concern is I'm in support of the tables and chairs, but from what I can gather is, I'm questioning because of, I guess, it's a little bulkhead door to the cellar, you have two tables on Bradford Street and only one on Hope Street.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to put another table on Hope Street because it's a straightaway sidewalk? Because when you come into this corner, there's barrels and a street lamp, and I understand the compliance officer went down there, but I think the more room, the better. So, if there's more ample space to deal with by moving that table back on Hope Street in front of your other window, I think it opens up the corner and the traffic pathway for pedestrians, and not to mention, there's a school across the street, so try to not impede that corner as much, but still have the same amount of tables.
I would actually prefer to put the tables on Hope Street, but there is, if you go down and look, our, the sidewalk distance on Bradford Street is 11-plus feet. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. And so, there's actually more room on Bradford, and there's quite a bit of distance between those two small tables. These tables are about 18 inches in diameter, before you get to that bulkhead, because we actually laid it out, thinking we could put the tables on Hope Street, and it doesn't work out that well. You can't really fit two on that corner, so I did look at that.
And I'm sure maybe we can go through administration or DPW if we need to move those barrels to accommodate, as long as the barrels are in that vicinity for trash and recycling.
You're still going to have about six feet in between our tables and the barrels. I made sure, I was concerned about that. Like I said, I would actually prefer to have them on Hope Street, but it just wasn't going to work.
Yeah, it's to do with safety, and just, you know, strollers, wheelchairs, and you just want that capacity.
Absolutely. It is wide, though.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, make a motion to approve the vitaling license and a sidewalk use license for Zenibel on 573 Hope Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item D3. This is the annual request for the one-day dancing and entertainment license for the All Lady Montcombe Festival. You have recommendations from the town administrator and fire chief to approve.
I move that we approve this fine event that comes on every year, with a slight admonition that we ask them to please be very careful with our grass, to the extent that they're able to be.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You have several requests for one-day dancing and entertainment licenses from the Bristol County Elks. Does the council wish to take them all together or individually?
I think to do them all together, if everybody's amenable to that.
Okay, so, this would be for one-day dancing and entertainment licenses for June 28th, July 3rd, July 19th, and August 23rd, all from Bristol County Elks, One Constitution Street. You have recommendations from the town administrator and fire chief to approve all.
With that, I make a motion to approve D4, D5, D6, D7, with the dates of June 28th, with this one-day license for the entertainment to be at the hours of 1 to 5, July 3rd, with the hours of 9 to 1, which will be indoors, and I must commend them for going indoors on the latter hours, and on July 19th and August 23rd, again, they will be performing out on the deck, 1 to 5 during daytime hours. So, with that said, amongst all the approvals by the administration and departments, I make a motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just for clarification, the hours are as specified by the petitioner, correct? You didn't change any of those?
No, that's what he did in every single one.
Oh, okay. That's okay. I just wanted to be sure that you weren't amending it.
No, I wouldn't do that.
Yep. Okay, well, you can.
The one o'clock, because they moved it in, otherwise I'd have...
That's why I said it's indoors, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I figured I'd make the clarity of, instead of just...
Exactly. Okay, the next item is item D8. This is the petition of Edward Cox, doing business as Sam's Cleaners, 170 High Street, requests council consideration for a public laundry license. You have a recommendation provided by the Department of Water Pollution Control and the town administrator to approve with certain conditions.
Could I just ask, the public laundry license, does that mean a laundromat, or is that other services?
I think they all kind of fall into the same category, but this is just basically a place where you drop your laundry off, and it gets washed for you, and...
It's not going to get changed, too, like...
No, and I guess what happened was, for a long time, they were operating on Independence Laundry on Dame Street, and they are no longer there. So, they moved the equipment, but can't operate it because they had no license for this location.
Okay, this is a good example of not, like, much detail as to what the plan was.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, good. All right, got it. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
With the recommendation to contact the water pollution control on, and all the other recommendations by the departments, I make a motion to approve the request for a public laundry license at 170 High Street.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is petition of George Gato, doing business as Bristol House of Pizza, 55 State Street, requests council consideration for sidewalk alcohol service license. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief to approve.
Well, this seems like a very suitable place with a 12-foot-wide sidewalk, even though there is some grass area, so I think it's fine. But I'd just like to ask, if I may, Chief, have the licenses granted thus far for sidewalk dining been conformed to pretty well, in your judgment?
Yes, they have, and this establishment, as you know, Mr. Shaw's been in business quite a while, and it's strictly beer and wine there.
Well, I think it's been an asset to the town and our citizens and visitors, but this type of thing, when it's new, it might have a tendency to crawl into getting bigger and bigger, and I think we need to keep watch of that.
We definitely are monitoring it, I assure you that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Bristol House of Pizza, request for a sidewalk alcohol service license, based on the recommendations of the town administrator and fire chief.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you will recall when the Sauvignon Bistro was before you, you had made a stipulation that there would be a periodic review. This is the request for council consideration of the continuation of this intoxicating beverage license for this establishment at 531 Wood Street. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator, the fire chief, and the chief of police to approve the license.
Chief, could you speak to us about this? Any concerns, questions, and...
No, here's a example. 120 days plus, they've been in compliant. I can assure you, we've stopped there quite often, just to make sure everybody was doing exactly what they said they would, and as of right now, there's not a problem, so we'd like them to continue with their business.
And nothing I've heard besides wonderful things about what they're doing, the food, the service, and the good neighborly actions.
Great news, have come a long way.
So, with that, I make a motion to approve the Class B V intoxicating beverage license.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you have something else? The next item is the dancing and entertainment license renewals for 2015, 2016. You have recommendation from the town administrator and fire chief to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the dancing and entertainment license stated here in this document.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the item E2, and this is, excuse me, E3. This is the hawkers and peddlers license renewals for 2015, 2016.
Make a motion to approve the yearly renewal of peddles hawkers license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the final one is E4, public laundry licenses for 2015, 2016, and recommendation from the town administrator and the Department of Water Pollution Control to approve.
On all department recommendations, approve the yearly renewal licenses for laundry.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item F1. This is the petition of Denise Webster, 125 Kickemewan Avenue, requests council consideration concerning the use of airgun cannons at Usher Farm.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Denise Webster, 125 Kickemewan Avenue.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. As you are aware, yourself and Mr. Sweeney, we were part of a large neighborhood meeting in the fall regarding the cannons that are used at the Usher Farm.
Correct.
And I have been in contact with Mrs. Kamara, and she has updated me on some general things, because, but apparently, there have been additional meetings between DEM and Mr. Usher himself, and so, I'm here for an update, because the season starts in three weeks. So, my key question to the council is, will there be guns or not? Cannons or not?
So, I'm going to get you, and the public, and my colleagues up to speed. As you've mentioned already, there was a meeting over the summer of the neighbors to the north of Usher Farm, and it was to share some concerns about the air cannons. If you're not familiar with the air cannons, it's the guns that go off, that make a noise just like a shotgun, and it scares the birds away, and the time, and you can correct me on this, if you would, but generally, around the mid-July through mid-August is when the birds actually come in and try to eat the crops. And as I said, that's a ballpark. I'm sure that there's a week plus and minus. I might be incorrect.
Yes.
And I understand also that every year, it changes, is that last year in particular was both a horrific gun year and a horrific bird year, so the combination of both was taxing to the neighbors and also to the farmer. I spoke with DEM, and I spoke with Walter Burke at the end of last year, and there was conversation that included a national grant to DEM, which was then potentially awarded to the local DEM, and the time moved forward on that one, it was awarded to the local DEM. DEM reached out to Rebecca Brown, it's actually Professor Rebecca Brown from URI, and asked her if she would write a grant for these monies, or at least a portion of these monies, to look at and study what options exist to control the birds, and more specifically, keep more of the corn crop, and also maybe help appease the neighbors with the noise. They were successful with that. She is working with, if my memory is correct, five different farms. Mr. Usher is one of the farms that were listed as a potential. I actually spoke to Mr. Usher today, and shared with him that this was on our agenda for this evening, and we'd be discussing this. I actually asked him if there was anything he wanted me to share, and any updates. Jim Lawson, and more specifically, Ken Ayers from DEM, is, Ken Ayers is the director of the agricultural portion of DEM, and Jim Lawson works for Ken Ayers. Jim has been in contact with Mr. Usher at length, recently, over about a week and a half ago, about a deer issue that he's having, but more specifically, to these cannons, what Rebecca Brown, Dr. Rebecca Brown from URI, is looking to do is potentially de-tassel a portion of his and other people's fields. Now, Mr. Usher has to obviously agree to this, and there's concerns that he has in regards to liability of people on his land, if somebody gets hurt, such and so forth. That being said, the goal of the study is to find out what works, and what works really good, and what doesn't work at all. For example, he's, Mr. Usher has been using Concord grape spray, if my memory is correct with that, and the idea behind that is to make the corn less attractive, to, also to explain, I probably should have done this, too, what is de-tasseling? When you look at the top of a corn stalk, it's got those little poofy things on the top of it, that's the tassel. Side note, every single one of those connects to a piece of corn. So, that tassel portion is what the birds hold on to when they eat the corn. De-tasseling means that once that corn is germinated, bees do their thing, they cut it off, and then the birds can't hold on to it anymore. So, what this professor would like to do with her students is take a portion of the field, Mr. Usher's and others, cut off the top of that, and see what it actually does. Is there benefit to it? If there is, take the next step and apply for a grant for a de-tasseling machine that URI would own, and each of the farmers would be able to, potentially, be able to use. I say potentially, because obviously, there'd be timeframes involved with everybody's corn grows at the same time, such and so forth. So, de-tasseling, different sprays, different kinds of corn they're looking at, to planting different type of corn, and seeing what the results are with the birds. I spoke to Mr. Usher about that, and he is amenable to talking to DEM. He's got some concerns, as I mentioned, about liability, but he's open to those possibilities. And it's my understanding that that's a nice step forward from the past of conversation, number one, and number two, being willing to talk about this. But to answer your question directly, what about the air cannon? What happens? Are they going away this year? No. No, they're not. No, what does that mean to you? I don't know, and what I mean by that is, are the birds as bad as they were last year? If they're not, he doesn't have to put them on, and I'm not making Mr. Usher's case, I'm just sharing the information. It's important that you know that. It's also important, and I think you know this, too, but the town has no jurisdiction on this whatsoever, meaning the Right to Farm Act precludes us from being able to say, you can, you know, you're making too much noise, you're making too little noise. I did ask DEM the question, how many is too many? And there is an appropriate amount, and Mr. Lawson shared with me an example of a farmer down in South County who was using an air cannon specifically to make the neighbors mad, and DEM got involved, so they are not, you know, blind-eyed. They said, well, that's just okay. They looked at it, and they said, this is inappropriate. You do not need this air cannon in this instance. They do believe that Mr. Usher is benefiting from the air cannon, that it is actually beneficial to keep the birds away. They also believe that there hopefully is a better way and a quieter way to do it, whether it's a larger interval, placing it in different areas. I myself actually did some research on this, and I don't know if you've ever gone to a used car place and seen that weird-looking inflatable guy moving his arms around and everywhere? Well, there's been a study done on that with apple trees, and it made 100% of the birds go away, because it had random actions to it. So, my point is that DEM wants to know about that, because I'd heard about it. They're looking at all possibilities. Mr. Usher is open to speaking and continuing the conversation. It's guessed that about July is when those, was, the noise would start again.
It starts right after the 4th of July.
Okay, and that's actually what he had said to me, about the 10th is what he told me, so, in and around that area. So, so, my colleagues and I are, I brought everybody up to speed now. I'm interested, and I know DEM is, and it sounds like Mr. Usher is, too, that if there is an alternate solution, then he's open to it. And I think that's a nice step forward. It doesn't make the air cannons go away, and I'm not suggesting it does, but I think we've made some progress. I know that I and my colleagues are more than willing to be part of the solution. Mr. Lawson is going to give me a buzz back in a couple of weeks or so with the answers, one of the answers to Mr. Usher's question regards to liability of having people on the land. Those de-tasseling would be a small portion, so it wouldn't be the 50 or so acres that he's growing corn on, it would be a small portion of that.
Do you know what degree?
I'm sorry, I don't know. It would depend on each place. There's a Shartner Farms, I've heard of, that's a large, large farm. They are part of the study. So, it's possible that it doesn't have to happen at Usher's Farm to have a solution present itself. So, it may happen in another part of the state, and he and others will be able to use that solution. So, it doesn't, we don't have to find the solution here in Bristol, but we can use it if it's found somewhere else.
So, if I understand you correctly, is the agreement to try any of these still to be decided?
Mr. Usher told me that he planned on, and is planning on, using the Concord grape spray. Again, he's had success with that, so it is, there is nothing that seems to be the answer, it seems to be a combination of things.
Mr. Chairman, did he mention anything on frequency of the kabooms?
Mr. Chairman, did he mention anything on frequency of the kabooms? Could he spread those out, or was that?
I didn't ask him specif, I asked him generally about it, and his response was, it really depends on the year and the day and what's going on with the birds at the time. So, but as I keep saying, DEM is willing and wanting to find a solution. I know the neighbors are, I know you are, want to be part of the solution, and I know we will be too. I'm not going to just, it's not going to go away. I was working on this in the wintertime, and Walter was a big part of getting me in contact with the right people, and did a lot of work. And I know there's been a lot of work in the past, and I shouldn't forget that. And there was a lot of people that did a lot prior to this too. So, but, we'll move together. I should know some more information in a couple of weeks. I can share it with you and your neighbors as soon as I get it.
Well, to be honest, I thought that this meeting was more toward the 20th, and I only found out about it tonight, so it was by luck that I'm even standing here. But I, since it sounds like there may be relatively little or no change to the air cannons this summer, I think if it's possible, you know, I would like to have this come up again, to, you know, continue to follow this, to come to some resolution, because I, unless there is someone else in this room that lives in the area where I live, you have no idea what this is like. To hear them start at 6:00 in the morning and go till 6:00 or 7:00 at night, seven days a week, multiple, multiple times, I mean, it's, you cannot sit out on your deck, you cannot have a phone conversation outside. So I was, I have to say, I appreciate all of the help that, you know, that you are, you know, taking the time and investigating this issue, and I do appreciate that. I was a little disconcerted in some respects last summer when I asked for a noise meter through the police department, and they sent some, said that they would send someone down with it, but the policeman came but didn't have the meter. And I, if we're going to have this again, which we are, I would respectfully request that we get readings, because in my mind, whether it's a, something from the DEM, that this is where it's coming from, and I understand that, but I do think that there is an impairment issue in terms of the noise factor and the disturbing of the peace. So I am, would like to request if someone from the police department could come down and take noise meter readings. Is that possible?
Anything is, anything is possible, but as you said earlier, it's not enforceable.
I, and I understand that, but in order to have good information to make decisions, we need to have some data. Everybody loves to work off of data, and I have no idea what that noise meter is, but it's a lot louder than a shotgun. A lot louder. Because there were days when he was trying the grape juice last summer, that they were not using the cannons for maybe a week, and they were using shotguns. And there is a tremendous difference in noise. So I would like someone to come down. I don't think that that's an unreasonable request.
Well, I can say this, is that it sounds like the chief is amenable to that.
I mean, I understand that may not.
But it's important to know that, I think it's.
Yes, I understand that.
But it's important to say, it just is that we can't, unfortunately, we can't do anything about it, and I know that there's been a lot of research about what we can't do, but your request was heard, and it sounds like he's more than amenable to have one of his officers come down, so why not?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I think we all understand your frustration. We don't live there.
It's really, like I said, I do appreciate everyone's work. I guess I was hoping.
For good news.
Well, for better news.
Thank you.
Let's, you know, I do, I appreciate all of your efforts, I really do, but like I said, you have to be down there to, you know, you have to, in other words, if you've worked for 35 years and you have a chance to be out in your deck, you know, through the summer to enjoy it, and you can't do that, you know, we haven't been able to do that for some time.
Of course.
So it's just, it's unfortunate, because I love the town, but this is, to be honest with you, I said to my neighbor tonight, I said, this makes me want to leave, unfortunately. And we have had problems in our area selling homes, you know, because of that noise. People have literally gone, come down to see a house, get out of their car, and then get back in their car, and they leave. So it's, it's not a light issue, I guess, but, and it's really hot, I'm sure, for people around the town who don't hear it like that. And when the wind is blowing from the south, it's even louder. So, you know, and that's typically where we get our breezes from.
Southwest. So here's what we'll do.
So thank you for.
We will, I will stay on top of it. I'm going to work with all of my colleagues, and as soon as we have some more information, I will share it with everyone, including the neighbors and, of course, Mr. Usher.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Lou, what kind of motion you doing on this?
It would be a receiving file.
So moved. Second?
Can I speak?
Sure.
My name's Thomas Kamara. I live at 15 Wilcox Lane in Bristol.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to say thank you to yourself and your colleagues for doing everything that you've done about this. And also, I want it noted that we truly appreciate what Mr. Usher is willing to do and what he's done. It has not gone unnoted. It really means a lot. So thank you to Mr. Usher, to you guys for working on this, and we will come to a solution. I know we will. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was very nice.
Go ahead.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item F2. This is the petition of Linda Jones, 15 Curtis Road. Request counsel consideration for tree removal.
Has this been looked at by the tree warden?
Yeah, the back. Tony, did you want to talk to this?
The tree warden actually has visited twice. He visited in 6th, June 4th, and he has gone back since to take a look at the tree. The issue is not the tree, as it's pointed out, it's really the roots of the tree, which appears to be causing a problem, so it's claimed. I did go there and visit myself. I took various pictures, unfortunately, I couldn't have them printed for this evening. Little bit challenging technology, so, but I'll work on that. But in looking there, I certainly could not make a determination that the roots were not the cause for the driveway to be somewhat in this repair. I would have to refer this to the new DPW director. You know, Mr. McBride, who's with an engineer background, certainly could assess the situation much better than I could. But just looking at the whole situation, the issue that it was claimed that there was some damage down to vehicles, was the fact that not the driveway, but the road, the side of the driveway next to the tree that was being used, where there's obviously roots there, that certainly can cause some damage to a vehicle, because obviously that is not intended for a driveway. So I can understand where there is a claim to some of the damage caused to the undercarriage of any vehicle. But again, I would defer this to the new director and have him assess, having the background, the knowledge as an engineer to assess the situation, if in fact the roots are causing any of the issues that are being claimed to the driveway.
So that sounds like we need to allow a little more time for analysis. And I would just make a remark that this is not an unusual problem in this town in Bristol. We're very proud of our trees, and unfortunately, every tree has roots, and sometimes they cause trouble. My nephew has the same kind of thing going on. And I think that it should be the position of the town to be responsive to the problem, but we don't want it to go to the extreme that we chop down all our trees, perhaps to an extent that's unreasonable.
Are you Mr. and Mrs. Jones?
I, I'm Linda Jones, my husband Paul Jones.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. I did fill out a form, and I did submit some pictures. I don't know if you have them.
We have.
And it is indeed, I, we had Mr. Galuska at my house a year ago, and he came with a representative from your Department of Public Works. I don't know if he keeps a log or, you know, he had, he filed in a report, but we were out there together, and he did note, both he and his employee noted that they, there was damage to my driveway. You can see that the driveway is listed. The root, the tree is beautiful, it's a very healthy tree. Unfortunately, that's the problem. It's so healthy that the roots have crept under the driveway, and he noted that. The arborist came and noted it was a healthy tree. He also noted there was damage to the driveway. He came, I don't know, he came this year, but I didn't see him this year, but I'm talking about a year ago, and I know you said that he did come, because I went out and spoke with Mr. Texero when he came.
Our paperwork shows he was there, looks like he signed this on the May 19th, so it must be.
This year?
Yes.
But he was there a year ago. I don't know if anybody kept any notes. Both Mr. Galuska came, is it, did I say, I don't even know if I pronounced it correctly, I'm sorry. And an employee came with him. And then he sent the arborist, the tree warden, about a couple of weeks afterwards, and I spoke with him as well. But this was a year ago. They asked me if I could wait a year because of the timeframe, I guess they, I don't know why, but, so I came in and did the paperwork this year. We have had damage to the cars. It's preventing us from not only repairing our driveway, but for, from expanding it as well, because, you know, we have children, they're driving, now we have more cars. And we, I had a contractor look at it, and he said to me, there's no point in repairing it because the roots are there, you're not going to be able to. You can look at the pictures where it's.
Could I ask your question?
Yes, of course.
To the point. I have not visited the site, I think I will.
Yes, please.
But I got the impression from, what was written, that you have the, enough property for a rather wide driveway, do you?
That we have a wide driveway, or would like a?
Well, I mean, could you have a wide driveway?
We have a driveway now that accommodates one car behind the other. I'd like to have, be able to fit, we have enough room.
It's just enough for two cars?
Yes, yes.
And is this intrusion of the roots on the middle of that, or one side of it?
Right now, and I'm not an engineer, someone else would have to look at it. You can clearly see that it's uprooted on the left side, where we would like to expand it. But I can't tell if they're growing underneath. If you look at my neighbor's yard, actually, the roots have gone, they're traveling. I can't believe how far across the yard that they're traveling. Now, they haven't, they're not lifted up quite as much yet, but pretty soon when they start to cut their lawn, that's going to interfere with their cutting of their lawn. You know, like I said, it's a very, it's a beautiful tree, it's a very healthy tree, and that, that's unfortunately the problem.
I talked, I talked with the tree warden, and he specified that that's a 50-year-old tree, and that's why the roots are so into the ground the way they are.
Oh, yeah.
Did you already have a determination, you said you had a contractor to replace the driveway, whether it would be a one-car driveway or two-car driveway? Is that project, that's the project you would like to do?
That's what I would like to do.
That's why you're asking? I just want to know, the asking of the tree removal is for your driveway?
Right, right. It's for the driveway, yes.
Because I heard that, you know, it was a safety issue because of the cars, but.
Well, both, because we've been using the side of the driveway, we will, we'll pull a car up because we need to, especially if they're going to plow, and we've had the bottom of the car, you know, two cars now have been damaged because of the roots.
Even if we were to just replace the driveway that's there, I think it would entail probably damaging the roots of the tree, and that would be a concern for us as well as the town. We don't want to do that. We don't really want to be here, asking for the tree to be removed, but we don't see an alternative. If the town comes up with an alternative, we'd be happy to hear.
Well, I'm just looking at it on a perspective that if you were to remove the tree, would you be removing the roots also? So there's two ways to go about removing trees. Some trees are just, you know, they stump grind to the base, but in this instance, it's not so much the tree, it's the roots. So to remove the, a healthy tree, in this instance, you would have to remove all those roots, which in turn, we don't know the extent of where those roots go, as you specified, to any drainage, or the road, or your neighbor's yard, or whatever.
Or, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm watching my walkway starting to crack. Now, it could be settlement, I don't know how far those roots have gone, because you know, trees have been known, I did a little bit of research myself, they've known to like damage homes, that's how strong some of the roots can be.
Mr. and Mrs. Jones, I, I understand this is a nuisance. I, believe me, I get it, I'm looking at the pictures and I feel your pain, I understand you want to expand the driveway.
Well, and I want to repair my driveway, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to know, how much would it cost to remove the tree, and are you willing to pay, pay for it? Or what, what, are you willing to plant something that's less invasive as far as roots? What, what, what is your ultimate plan? I mean, I understand you want to move forward with this project.
I, I don't care whether the, I don't want the tree there because the tree is, is damaging my property. I, the tree needs to come down. I don't think I should take it down, it's not my, it's not my tree.
Sure.
If it were my tree, do you want another tree planted there? We could put like one of those city trees that they, they have in the city with, where we're sure that the roots will not invade the property or damage the property.
Sure. No, I'm just trying to understand the big plan, that what's your, what's your full plan?
I haven't thought about that. I'm just, I'm just.
We don't have a long-term plan.
We really don't.
Taking it as a step at a time.
Yeah, I just want to get, I want a new driveway, and I don't want to have to worry about damaging the cars anymore.
Okay. But you didn't get any estimates in regards to how much it would be to remove it, did you?
The tree?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
So if you're amenable to this, as we started this conversation, the administrator suggested we should get input from our new DPW director and the tree warden at the same time. Our next meeting is July 8th. I don't think, what I'd like to do, and if my colleagues are amenable to this, is get some input from exactly that, and say, what are the possibilities? Is, can you do, can you repair your driveway? Or is, is a second opinion, can you put that addition that you want to do on the driveway without cutting down the tree? If the answer to those things is no, we need to know that.
Well, let me ask.
And at this point, and it sounds like, like you've gotten some quotes to say that you must remove that tree if you want to do anything with the driveway.
Well, to repair the driveway or to expand it. But I don't know, can you, can you cut away the roots and not damage the tree?
That's the part where we would lean on the tree warden and say.
Your arborist, your arborist said no.
He said no, that's what he told us when he was at our home.
But maybe he'll have a different suggestion.
It would seem to me that unfortunately, you've waited a while on this. If you're okay with waiting just a little bit longer, we'll get fair and honest input from, from, we already have from our tree warden, but maybe in conjunction with the DPW director, and say, these are your options, this is what you can do. As you can hear from all of this conversation, every single tree in town means something to us, and I know it means something to you too.
We have a tree in front of my home, if you ever saw it, you'd say to yourself, why do you have that tree there? Because we could not possibly cut it down. It's our tree. So we, believe me, we, we're big environmentalists for one thing, and we don't want to kill a tree, but I, just my driveway.
So what we're going to ask for is some solid input, what are the choices?
Okay.
And then if, if you're amenable to that, we can continue this to our July 8th meeting, and we'll ask for some concrete, no pun intended.
That's fine.
Information about what we do at this point.
So I would move that we continue this to the July meeting, awaiting the input that has been suggested.
Would we be, would we be notified in advance of what those recommendations are, or would you have to come to the meeting to find out?
I think we can make it so we can, as soon as that information is available, we can make it available to you, too.
That'd be great.
Tony, could you, yes, if you wouldn't mind just contacting the administrator's office and.
Sure.
Get the information as soon as it's available.
But it might also be good for you to come to the meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, no, we'll, we'll come to the meeting, and it's the same time?
7:00, yes.
7:00, okay. And I just want to tell you that your secretary is awesome. She, if it weren't for her, I didn't even know you were supposed to fill out the paperwork. She did everything, and then I came over to the girls here, and they, they were very, very helpful, so.
That's nice to hear. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, above and beyond.
Thank you all, and have a good fall.
Okay.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We have the petition of John Gomick, 75th Drive, request consideration for tree removal, we've got recommendations provided by the town administrator and the tree warden to include the certain conditions.
Upon those recommendations and approvals, I recommend that the tree be removed at 70 Cliff Drive, as requested.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have the petition of Ethan Tucker, on behalf of the Trident Race, in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department, request council consideration to serve alcoholic beverages at the town beach on July 25th. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and chief of police to deny, and recommendation provided by the, by the fire chief also.
Walter, how about it? The precedent is an issue here, I think.
Can't hear you.
I'm, I'm requesting that we postpone this until the next council meeting. I've met with Ethan Tucker, the, the event itself is wonderful, and we really want to go forward with the, with the event. However, we want to reconsider the location of where to have alcohol, and we want to resubmit to the town administrator and the, and the police department regarding a new location that we're discussing.
Well, I think you're so right to that, because this isn't just one day, this is a precedent forever, and we've got to be careful.
Why, 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 what is the importance of having the alcohol at all, at the, at the park? I mean, imagine this is going to be during the day, no matter where you have it, there's not going to be, there's people around, whether it's a ball field area, whether it's the beach area?
These, these are, are, these events, they, they have the Bulgadash event, and it's, and it's also the Mudder event, and it's basically, you get, you get down and dirty, and, and you do obstacle courses, and it's a real grueling type of exercise, where adults run and compete against each other, so there's, there's the, the tradition of a celebratory drink after, after the event. They, they go on in, in New Hampshire, and they're really growing exponentially throughout the country. It, it, it's a really fun event, and it's, it's, it's designed for adults, and to really challenge themselves.
Tough Mudder.
So, to keep with the tradition, Ether, Ethan and his committee, really eager to do something, and we're, we're talking about doing something that's not as visible, and as more isolated, rather than right in the, right in the middle of the town beach. And I, I wasn't in support of having that done in the middle of the town beach, so we're looking at other alternatives.
Would one of the alternatives be inside at Quinta Gamlin?
It, it could be, it could be in, in an area more secluded, away from the public.
I think, I think, I think the, the point is going to be, and I know we're going to put it off so we don't have to discuss it all, but the point is going to be that you set the precedent, so everybody else who's doing anything is going to want to have alcohol, and they'll find some secluded spot to do it in, and, like, I'm very concerned about that. And I think the, the letter we got from the chief, with the reasoning, I think, was a good one, and so I think, I think if you really look at, like, maybe an indoor place, because you've, you've had liquor licenses for one day, haven't you, for events that you've held there?
Not yet, right?
We've never had, in Parks and Recreation, we've never had them.
No, but I mean, we, but, but events that have been held at your place have had alcohol, haven't they?
Never at the town beach, no.
No, no, at Quinta Gamlin.
Yes.
It's a big fun, yeah, it's a fun, yeah, as I'm talking about, like, yeah.
I think I saw somebody dancing with the stars, if my memory is correct.
Yeah, dancing with the stars, that's the event, yeah, with a drink.
They also, I mean, other communities do it very often, like Waterfire, for instance, and that's on, on city land, but I, I just think that there's, we need to have a bigger discussion about the appropriateness of it.
Well, Walter, I'd just like to mention to you, in connection with this, a little bit of Bristol history, there was a time when we allowed a little drinking along the parade route at 4th July, and that expanded, and it led to a lot of disgraceful and really threatening events that happened from time to time, fights, going crazy with fireworks, and it was all fueled by the beer and wine and liquor that was on the parade route. So we stopped the possibility of drinking on the parade route, and the parade has been much better ever since. And I think we need to remember that in relation to anything else that's brought up, and I think that if this is going to happen, I don't think you should allow it on your own premises at the beach, maybe it can be done in some secluded area or off to the edge, but I wouldn't do any more than that.
If I may, just make clarity, because I know you're postponing this, but when, I preliminary looked at this, even though it's postponed, and I thank Mr. Tucker for reaching out to myself and my colleagues once again for revisions, because there's some key factors I want my colleagues to be mindful, and, and they have spoken on the topic of this, is, I looked in the application, it said, "in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation." We also had a previous agenda item with a church that comes before us, we also have another agenda item that we're going to be hearing down at Rockwell Park. My concern is, when you tie the Town of Bristol, when we have ordinances on the books that we craft and protect our town, it's due to the fact of the liability, that's my concern, is not only the precedent, but it's almost like we're being hypocritical to pick and choose when the town, which we have that right to go under our inter-local trust, because that's what we would be doing. You specified, there was an event at Quinta Gamlin, but that was an entity, and Mr. Tucker outlined with his new revisions we'll be hearing, about how he will address, as an entity, of that personal liability, like one of the churches that go on the town common. They hit perimeters, and those perimeters are, they take on and provide the Town of Bristol with their own proof of insurance and liability, not for the Town of Bristol and its taxpayers, in case God forbid something happens, that we're responsible. We do have a right to go under our inter-local trust, but I'm just saying, I want my colleagues to be mindful that every case that comes before us, if we start going on town property, and we're in conjunction with it, I would imagine we're going to fall under our insurance policy, and I think we should just be mindful of when we're having these cases and we're doing that. And I believe, it was specified that, you know, this council did make a judgment on something, and I just want to be part of this record tonight, that I have not approved any liquor being on town property that wasn't permitted or on file with us.
Is there anything else?
Thank you.
So we have the recommendation of our Parks and Recreation Director, Walter Burke, to continue this agenda item to July 8th, so we can have some more information and some more suggested, different locations, such and so forth. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the first thing, under your public service appointment section, item G1A, Personnel Board, you have the resignation of Michael Cabral, 7 Ursula Drive.
Make a motion to receive and file, and make a thank you to Michael for his time on the Personnel Board.
Definitely.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
The, the next item, first item under all business, item H1, this, the council requested that the Bristol County Water Authority Directors, who represent Bristol specifically, might attend the meeting, I believe some or all of the directors are present, and the council members pose certain questions that would like to be considered by those directors.
First, thank you to our directors for taking time out of your schedules to answer some of our questions and have some dialogue about this. Our clerk was kind enough to cajole us all to come up with those questions prior to this meeting, I know we have a few here, and I'm sure there's a few more from these, and the first couple are actually from Tim, so I'm going to start it off with you, sir.
Yeah, my first question, thank you for coming.
Can you come up?
Good evening.
Aye.
As you can see, my first question was to justify all the salary increases. Now, we've seen in the newspaper, the constant rates, high, rate hikes over the, the last few years, and been actually going on for quite a while, and I also want to know, and please state if I'm incorrect, that you guys were saving quite a lot of money with the customer service software, so because you were saving money with the software, everybody got a three and a half percent raise. And I just, I just want to understand, why wouldn't you even think about the, the payers, the, the people that are paying the bills? Why wouldn't that go back to reduce, reduce the bills, since they've been getting, you know, a rate hike every, every year? And, so I, just trying to understand the justification for it all.
Gina McDonald, one of the directors, let me first say that the customer service software is really not fully implemented yet, so the cost savings from that have not been realized. But I did not, I was not able to attend the meeting that voted the, the salary increases, so I'm going to let my other two directors respond to that.
First off, it wasn't three and a half percent, it was two, two and a quarter?
You might, I want to use the microphone, sir.
Yeah, so it wasn't a three and a half percent increase, I believe it's two and a quarter percent.
Three and a quarter?
Two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason that we, we did this, for a number of reasons, but, one is that every year, the American Waterworks Association does a survey of salaries for various job classifications throughout the country, and they group them into treatment plants of, companies of different sizes, and we compare our salaries against those of the, the national averages, and we're considerably below the average, even though the cost of living here is much higher than it is for the, the country as a whole. So, we're just trying to get them up to be equal to the, the average salaries.
Does that still justify the hikes, year after year? All, I mean, it, it's just, it seems like a lot, a lot to hit, you know, everybody, I mean, not everybody's making that kind of money to feel like they're, you know, getting a break, I mean, a lot of people are on fixed incomes, or, you know, it just, it just seems like this constant, constant, we're on this constant treadmill of hikes, 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 and I just wondering, where is it going to stop? When is that, when are we going to see some relief?
I don't want to hog this, but, the...
I'm sorry, I'm a little fired up.
No, the, the salaries for the employees is a very, very small percentage of the bill that the taxpayers are, are getting, because almost all of it is for purchasing water, so that's the major thing that they're paying for. And that's, so a two percent, two and a quarter percent increase was a very small increase in the other rates.
Well, then, can I just ask a follow-up? How much is the, can I just ask a follow-up to that, though? You said that's a small percentage. I just wanted, I actually differ with, with that response, so I want to go on record, saying that if you take a look at almost nonexistent turnover in personnel at the Bristol County Water Authority, that says to me that people are pretty happy with what they're paid, and if you take a look at the pension plan that was in effect before 2012, it was a pretty generous plan, and there's still an issue, even though the newer employees are not part of the pension plan, they have 401Ks, but the OPEB benefits still are accruing for all employees, and I think that that is a risk to all three towns. Now, the legislation was changed to require a vote of six people to approve all financial matters, and I think that's something that you need to be mindful of.
Could I, could I just follow up on Tim's question, though? If, I understand the Gina's point about the OPEB and all of that, but, you know, even if that is, whatever percentage it is, you, you referenced the, the cost of purchasing the water, how much has that gone up from, so, I assume that, I know Providence has had many rate hikes in the wholesale side, how much has that attributed to the increase?
Well, last year, if we hadn't been successful in...
Paul, could you, speaking to the mic, just so everybody can hear you, thank you.
Yeah, last year, if we hadn't been successful in challenging Providence, it would have gone up 35 percent. We got it to an increase, I think it was six. Six percent increase instead, so there was a tremendous savings that we had, otherwise it would have been even bigger.
Still a big increase.
Right, still a big increase, but about 80 percent of our budget is for buying
I, I think the other issue that you need, the other issue that you need to be mindful of, is that for years, there was little or no investment in infrastructure, so we have an aging infrastructure that has been under-invested in for years and years and years, and until the last five or six years, there were not even any adequate maps showing what type of piping was where, and what the condition of it was.
Could I just quickly ask, why did you give the executive director eight weeks
I, I, Paul, see, that, that's part of her, her, her package when we hired her.
I thought that was a new innovation this last year.
No.
I mean, who else do you know that gets eight weeks vacation? I've worked for a lot of companies in my life, and towns like Bristol, and nonprofits, and corporations, and shipbuilders and everything, I've never gotten eight weeks vacation, why does she get eight weeks vacation?
Well, it's not eight weeks vacation, it's eight weeks of total, total compensation time.
With what?
That includes sick time, you know, her own time.
Well, that's 16 percent of the year, it's absurd.
Yeah.
You, you should have, as directors, in my opinion, have said, "No, no way, nobody gets that, stay and do your job."
Well, it was part of the negotiations at the beginning.
Well, I don't care about the negotiations, it's just bad business practice, for two reasons. One, the person should be there doing the job most of the year, and secondly, it's a terrible example to all the other employees to try to get other excesses that are unjustified. And I don't agree with you, sir, that the cost of people is a small part of the issue. It's a very important part of it, and it ought to be kept under control, we want them to be paid adequately and taken care of, but excesses like the eight weeks vacation are absurd, and shouldn't be allowed to happen.
Tim, your next question.
I was curious on the status of the secondary water source, where do we stand on that?
Back in, sometimes past winter, there was a group of us, I was one of the ones, met with Rep. Calison to discuss ways of going forward. The difficulty we're having is that East Providence has just been totally reluctant to work with PCWA on any solutions at all. Calison said that he was going to be working with us, and we're, we're still hopeful that that's going to happen. I know that the director has been trying to meet with East Providence now continually for the last six months since the election, or eight months, without any success at all, so I don't know what's going to happen, and I think it's going to have to come from the
I share your concern, and my, my concern personally about this is that I don't think that there's an adequate level of urgency about get us, getting a secondary water supply, either with or without East Providence. My recommendation was that the executive director's compensation package be directly tied to success on that, but I had no success in getting that accomplished. If this were a private company, and if the effort had been as ineffectual as what I think our effort has been, and is removed from the front line of battle, I, I think we would have said, "Thanks, you have six months to fix this, or your replacement will fix it." And we can't afford to renovate the old, or replace the old treatment plant, it's much more expensive to do that than to get a secondary water supply.
If I might just add to that, it's my understanding that it was a lack of action by the Bristol County Water Authority that caused the General Assembly to cancel the $15 million element of the 2014 bond issue, and that was a terrible loss, and it, it came about, as I understand it, from several legislators, because the Bristol County Water Authority had not pressed for that, or submitted enough information to justify it. And to me, that was a terrible fact, because that 15 million, plus a bit more money, might have, might have allowed us to accomplish what Tim raises, which I think is a very, very important accomplishment. Heaven forbid, if we have a rupture in the line from Providence under the river, we have nothing else to take its place. have nothing else to take its place.
Sometimes it's lost on appointing authorities, that the water company is owned by three towns. And this council has taken initiative through resolution to go on record as seeking a solution of redundancy. That can't be said of Warren or of Barrington. Now, the question you pose about losing the money, the Providence Water Supply is a very strong agency, lobbying agency. And unfortunately, those people who make decisions on how much money comes our way are, on occasion, approached by the lobbying of the Providence Water Supply. And they simply say, "If you take away the revenue that is generated through BCWA, your constituents will pick up the cost of that." Now, that's a true fact. And as long as that's in existence, we're not going to get the money. Because the people who are making those choices, Halsey, and I don't have to remind you, they are not going to pass on the cost to their constituents to help Bristol, Warren, and Barrington solve our problems. It's not going to happen. Our best solution is to continue to work with East Providence and Pawtucket, and try to get a redundant source that would cost somewhere in the $2 million range. Now, whether or not the BCWA pays all of that or portions of it, is something that possibly can be worked out. Forget about massive amount of money coming our way through legislative action.
That could have happened, though, Frank.
That is not going to happen.
That could have happened.
It's not going to happen.
It could have happened if it'd been part of that bond issue.
No, what I'm saying is...
What Frank is saying is there weren't backroom deals that we didn't get a vote on.
You're not going to, you're not going to go to the leadership. And the leadership is not going to tell Rep. Gallison, "Okay, releasing the money," when the lobbyists are at the leadership's front door, saying, "If you release the money to BCWA, your constituents who put you in office, their rates are going to go up because we're going to lose the revenue." Now, that's a fact.
Well, now, could I kind of advance from that testimony and say this? What are we going to do to have a secondary water supply by 2020?
We have, in existence, you probably have a copy of a strategic plan that shows that we are, the three directors here, are fully behind a redundant source. And the best redundancy is to go Pawtucket. And the second best is to tie into East Providence as a backup.
Well, that's the best thing to do.
And again, this council was, this council was very active through resolution to head in that direction. It can't be said about...
What I have to say to you is...
And again, it's not going to happen when Warren and Barrington...
One at a time, please. One at a time. Thank you. Halsey, Mary, and then Ed, if you could...
I think the problem is Warren...
Wait, Gina, one second. Halsey, Mary, and then Ed, and then please, go ahead, Halsey.
Well, yes, if we could maybe just focus on the future, here we are on the 10th of June 2015. No matter what's happened before, what's maybe at this point more important is how are we going to get this secondary supply, hopefully through East Providence, in a reasonable number of years forward? And maybe there's some way that the plan can be codified more completely, and that there'd be a push on it every week of the succeeding months.
Well, we are, of the three communities, our source, our source is under the, you know, is drilled under Providence River, has a life expectancy of 50-plus years. That can't be said of the water supply that's coming and serving these problems. The only way that this is going to come together, in my opinion, it's going to take something catastrophic to happen to the water source that's coming across the bay in a trench that supplies these problems. Now, two trenches, picture this, trench, two pipes in a trench, 40 years old. Now, the pipes are no longer in the trench, pipes now are exposed. God forbid something happens to one, two of those pipes, they are without a source of water.
Well, let me make a comment on that.
Then you will see, then you will see hell freeze over, and we'll get...
Let me make a couple of comments on that. First of all, I think all of us here, shared with many Bristolians, that we want to have a secondary source. And as you say, any pipeline is vulnerable. But the right thing is to find a solution before the calamity and not wait for the calamity and everybody living here not have water. And I'm really troubled that there isn't already, after all these many months of gabbing and thinking, that there isn't a game plan. I mean, you've got to have a strong and practical and powerful game plan. That's the first requirement. And secondly, whoever's in charge should work on it every week of the year and press and push and go and do something. Just to sit around crying and moaning that it's impossible is not a solution to a serious need.
With all due respect, with all due respect, Halsey, we, your three directors are...
We agree with you.
Well, I'm not criticizing any of you people. I'm criticizing the result of the board authority.
There is a plan of action.
What is the plan?
To the day plan. I mean, it's an engineering plan. It's blue, it's in black and white, shows the pipes how much we need, where it goes. Paul can attest to that.
But is it the policy of the Bristol County Board of Authority to implement that?
Tomorrow, you said to us, "Here's $15 million. Within six months, we can put an RFP out and start the project and get water."
No, but let me ask you this specifically.
So we've been acting on that.
Let me ask you this specifically. There is a plan.
Yes.
Is it the policy of the Bristol County Water Authority Board of nine members to implement that policy?
Yes. Yes, I would say yes, yes.
Well, I think there's more nuance to that question. I agree that the simple answer is yes. But I don't think that the sense of urgency exists in Barrington and Warren. I think if Barrington's water users knew how vulnerable they are, their town council would be focused on the urgency level that you are. I'm not certain Warren would, because they don't want to pay the freight.
I think the directors, all nine directors, are solidly behind the plan, just if they're the two towns or not.
Well, I agree with you that they're solidly behind the plan, but we have a chairman of the board who has publicly stated that his role as a director is to hire management and to say yes to whatever management wants to do. And I don't think management has the same level of urgency that the towns should have to protect their water users.
So before we go any further, I know Mary and Ed had questions.
I just wanted to follow up with that, because Gina, you had said you didn't think there's, and you just said it again, a strong enough case or urgency. And I think Frank had said, you know, Bristol wants redundancy, but that can't be said of the other two towns. I, you know, and yet, the directors are all behind the plan. So that doesn't, so where is it breaking down?
There's a difference between supporting the plan and making the plan happen.
Right, and I think, right, and I think that, I mean, I don't know, you know, and it's been a while since we've all had our tri-town meetings and so forth, but it seemed to me like everybody was more or less on board with the East Providence plan. So, I mean, it's like, once again, you know, we, Halsey said it's been many months, it's been many years. This redundancy plan, whether it's our own system, whether it's somewhere else, the state not doing it, and we not doing it, is like 25 years old. I mean, this is like ongoing, never-ending problem. And I know, I think I know the answer to this, because I've asked it before, but if we're pushing for this, and is there another source that we can be backed up to? I mean, I think you, I think I've been told before, if I'm not mistaken, that even though they've upgraded their system in Equinix Island, which is a big project, because you have to go under the water again, that there isn't enough capacity there to tie into us. Is that correct?
Right, plus their rates are twice ours.
I mean, it seems to be like we sort of have no solution without everybody else. And when you said something catastrophic, I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen, but I thought that East Providence was at least backed up to for an emergency with Pawtucket already, aren't they?
Well, the city manager is cognizant of the problem. It's getting, it's getting the council to support that. And that's an ongoing dialogue that's happening.
Is that a money issue? Like, if the money was there, they wouldn't care? Or, I mean, because last year was potentially, there was money potentially, right?
I think they spent like $19 million, my recollection, on do something, to do something on it. They don't want to spend another dime. And I don't, and I don't say catastrophic incident lightly, but in reality, that's, if you want it to happen within our lifetime, that's what's going to have to happen. We can't, we can do anything, you know, and you're concerned about the rates. And Gina was right, and 2008, when the recession hit us, we stopped everything. We stopped putting any money into our infrastructure. And that's, you know, that's seven, eight years. Six years go by, now we have to address it. So that brings up the rate increase. In the meantime, in the meantime, the big users of water, manufacturing, are no longer around. The biggest user of water, our biggest customer, is the university. It's $45,000 a quarter. There's no more manufacturing. The use of water is going down, so the income, you know, is going down also. So we have to, where do you get the money to fix the problem?
But we're sort of like, I'm feeling like we're sort of stuck in the middle. You know what I mean? I mean, like, are there any place else to dig wells in our area? Because I think that we're, we've been pushing and pushing and pushing this issue. We've talked about, I talked about it, as you know, back when, when this whole thing started, about redundancy of source, and the fact, and I've accepted the fact that this is not going to happen. But the whole point to try to keep our own system was so that we wouldn't be held hostage by the water supply board, Providence Water Supply Board. And we could, you know, if it got too expensive on the wholesale rates, we would be able to go up and draw more of our own. And that is, I think, the question, where, which is interesting when you say, and I believe what you've said, Frank, about what's transpired behind the scenes. But I think it's interesting, because I thought there was going to be some stipulation that we still have to draw down the same amount of water, or pretty much the same amount from Providence anyway. And so, because I would have said, whoever gives us the best deal, I'm going to switch to that water, you know? And so I'm not sure why they're having that attitude, because we would still be locked into X amount of gallons, you know, from them. So I feel...
Well, it comes from Pawtucket, you know, they're...
No, I know, right, but I mean, like, no, I'm talking about, we'd still be locked into a certain amount by contract with Providence. So I just feel like...
It's frustrating.
...frustrated, because it's like, you know, there doesn't seem to be any solution. Like, I think there's like a, it's more, it's sort of dismal than it was like a year ago, because we were like pushing, pushing, pushing East Providence, and I, you know, people are still pushing it. But are you saying that at the director's level? Like, what level is not taking this seriously enough to, and I don't, I don't mean seriously, but that is not top priority to keep, you know, like, at some point in six months, the director of the water, of a water authority, or the town manager, if she can't get the appointment, maybe the three town administrators, managers could go and get the appointment with East Providence. I mean, at what point do you say, "Look, I'm not making any progress, so let me, you know, your towns are pushing for this, why don't you guys come and talk, leader to government leader?" Like, what else can we do?
I think that's what needs to happen, yes.
I think you're absolutely right, Mary. And the problem is that, you know, I'm a big believer that people do what they're paid to do, okay? So if my vote were the only vote that counted, I would say to the director, "There are going to be no increases in your salary, there are going to be no increases for any of the employees until you get this done. And what do you need to get it done? And I want to report every two weeks about the progress you've made." But that level of urgency does not exist with the leadership of the board of Bristol County Water.
Well, can you convey, can you convey back to them, to the rest of the other, and I know you're one-third of the group...
I'm just one person saying that you do not agree.
I don't agree with you. That's private industry talking. This is...
Okay, well, either way, well, either way, you're still only a third of the board anyway, right? So even if you all three were...
But you have two people of the, of the three people who don't agree with that level of, "You don't do this, and there are consequences to your failure to act."
If you can't, if you can't do it, because it's...
Okay, can we just, can I just finish that?
One at a time.
I mean, you can all debate that among yourselves later, but I think the point is, whether it's, you're going to have so many, so much time to get this done or not, there's still other ways to get that meeting with East Providence, for example, you know? And that is council president to council president, administrator, manager to manager, whatever. I'm a little more concerned about the fact that, like, all three towns are not on the same page, from what I'm hearing here. That's a serious problem. So we're fighting this battle, and we've been fighting it, and fighting, and fighting, and...
The thing that we have in our favor, Mary, is we have, we have, you know, 30 years life expectancy on the pipe. You know, we have, we have water for 30, 40, 50 years. I mean, you, you know, you can't count it.
Well, my point is, my point is the whole state should be redundant systems all the way around, and the state hasn't done anything around that themselves for like 20, 30 years either. So, I mean, you know, this is a problem that is, a disaster is waiting to happen, because when you've got more and more of the state relying on the situat, and you don't know what can happen in this era of terrorism and everything else, I mean, there's lots of potential problems for the whole system not to be backed up, and a state this size is a little bit ridiculous, in my opinion. But it hasn't happened. So it's like so many other things. It falls onto our local laps to be able to figure out what we're going to do. So we have this authority, we thought we were on the path, like, we, for years, we thought we were going to have our SHAD and our backup system, and we've gotten it done, and then it doesn't, it's not EPA compliant, et cetera. And now we come up with another plan that seemed feasible. And now that sounds like it's just like, yeah, it's kind of might happen, but it might not, because the other towns really don't care that much. I mean, that's very discouraging for us.
It's discouraging.
And what can we do about that?
It's discouraging for me and for Paul and for...
Right.
See, I would look to you as the council, and I would say, "What direction are you giving us as directors to take? How urgent is this?" Because my two companions...
The answer to that one is very simple. Priority one. There's the direction. Honestly, priority one.
So what kind of downside do we create to make that happen?
We've been talking about this plan, and we have options for the plan. What we've been trying to do is to get East Providence to comply, because that would save everybody, East Providence money or save us money. If they don't do it, we can go it alone, but it's going to be really expensive.
And so we back to Tim's question on rates. You know, where does it end? I mean, you can't, you can't. You can't be, you know, we have 16,000 ratepayers, 8,000 live in Bristol.
What about new technologies out there? What about desalination plants, those sort of things? New technologies? I mean, let's start thinking outside the box.
Take 50 million, drop it in the ocean, and maybe it works.
It's more difficult, in doubt, than what we're talking about significantly.
Ed, you wanted to say?
Are you sure?
I'm positive. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you all for coming, by the way, tonight. Gina, you made some good points, because it starts at the top. There's nine directors, I know you're only three. But the direction of the three towns, I think the other two towns have to be reminded, and I suggest that, other than our directors going back to their directors, because they are the board, and when things don't go right, they remove the top person, because you have those votes. So that's crucial. Just like us, I think we have to have another tri-town meeting with Barrington and Warren to have this conversation again, and to be updated personally by them, to hear it from them on how they stand, because you made a good point. We know that you have a five-to-10-year plan that you implemented, so there's questions of rate hikes, the infrastructure you're correct on. But also in that five-to-10-year plan is a redundant water source. And coming up, your chairman of your board says in his minutes that he's conveying to his board that going forward this year is a top priority. At least I got his sentence to that. And then you have emergency situations. So I just feel everything that your director said that should be in place, and the rates accordingly, and you did get feedback at one of your meetings, even though there's place cards for rate increases, according to your five-to-10-year plan yearly, I think, you know, Ms. McDonald makes a point that you could improvise, number one, on the rate of return, there's many factors, benefits or rate increases tied to compensation. But on a yearly concept, those numbers can change, and I'm sure your financial manager can tell you that. So going forward, the only message I had tonight, I know you're just three out of nine, but if you can convey from this council back of the urgency that we're not ignoring this issue, it is needed, it's tiresome, and make it happen, once and for all. And we know, you could say about rate increases, but you know something? I can't buy it. I did support the resolution to tie into Pawtucket, but I'm a foresightful person. For some reason, I just get a feeling we're going to go into the PUC in that direction. And I still had comments when the chairman brought up, even though you're saying $50 million about going the other way. We just have to look out for ourselves, because, Mary, you said, "We're all by ourselves here as a town, and we have to look after that." Thank you.
And you want to get, you know, the PUC, let's put this... And you want to get, you know, the PUC, let's put this, the bed once and for all. You get involved in PUC if you're selling water to another community, all right? And the PUC comes into effect so that you don't overcharge that community, because they don't have water. I can't see, and with all due respect, and I can't see us ever going into PUC, because we're not going to be selling water to anyone.
With all due respect, Frank, we didn't see a director come in and hire all top positions for the BCW, they didn't exist before, and it really isn't needed right now.
Well, you know, with all due respect, there's thirty-five people there, twenty-five are union, ten are non-union people. And our budget, our budget process and line item is a block of money. This year's twenty-three thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars. We don't tell her how, who gets what, and that's micromanaging. My concern is that I want the eight thousand people in Bristol, when they turn on the water, to know it's safe to drink, okay? And if that happens, then I'm satisfied. I'm satisfied with how staff is making that happen, because it's not happening in other communities, other states, or on the West Coast. Look at the West Coast, look what's happening on the West Coast for a while. But anyway, so I judge, I judge what our executive director is doing by the results that come from the Fed standards and state standards. So far, you know, we're above average on all of that. It's taken three years for me to support what she's doing and the staff that she's assembled around her. And I believe, just one director, I believe that staff has, is the best that I've seen in over twenty years on the board. And by that, I mean, it's serving, it's serving us the best of its capacity.
So a couple of things. First is, these last two questions were mine, we're talking about the status of East Providence. We've talked about that at some point or some length. I've talked to councilpeople in Warren and in Barrington, and the feedback that we've gotten is, I believe, exactly what you're telling us. I think the executive director wasn't forthcoming with all of the information. It's my understanding that East Providence is not necessarily opposed to this, they just don't want to be part of the monetary solution. There's no reason, they have no skin in the game, and they don't have any reason to be part of this monetarily. They've spent their money, they believe they're all set, and we can't convince them otherwise. They'll say, go ahead and go through our town, we'll give you the permits and all that stuff, but it's your dime, it's not our dime. Oh, and when you do go through our town, and I don't blame them for this, sounds like I do, but when you go through our town, we want a connection too.
Oh, yeah.
So they want, and again, there's no reason, there's no motivation. My last question was about the SHAD factory. I have not, I know that you look at me with, what are you talking about? Why do you keep talking about this? But I have not given up on this. I look at, Frank, you brought this up earlier about California, there is nothing more important than your own water in my head.
You don't want that water.
See, I do. I got to tell you, I do.
There's no way you could treat that water, that you drink it.
I've, and you and I have had this conversation, and we, I think we respectfully disagree with each other, but let's not end this conversation with, we agree to disagree on some things. Let's take a next step on this. What do you need from us? What can we do for you?
I need, I need tri-town meeting.
Say again?
I need tri-town meeting.
Done.
And lay it all out on the table, so that when you, as a council, sit down and discuss the problems with your directors, that you're fully aware where the other two communities stand. Because you are, you are above the curve in trying to solve the problem, but you're doing it all by yourself.
So what I'd like to, is some real numbers. I've heard it's twenty million, not from you, from everybody. It's twenty million to do this, it's fifty million to do this, it's two million to do this, it's five million to do this. I want real numbers. What are we really looking at? And for me, and I'm sure for my colleagues too, if we have this information, we can point a direction and bring everybody there. If I don't know, and my colleagues don't know, and you don't know how much it costs to do something, we speculate and we guess. I've heard the numbers of ten million to fifty million to fix our plant.
Part of it is the engineering hasn't been done.
I've done that for forty-four years now, I know what it costs to build a plant.
But I'd like to, I'd like that in writing, I'd like an estimate of what it costs, and not necessarily from you, but an estimate. So we can all look at this and say, is this a-
I believe Smith did it for you, didn't they?
Then let's, let's make sure that we include that in our conversation. So I will work with our good clerk, and we will work with our other communities, and we will set that tri-town meeting so we can have these open discussions.
I think that would be good. I just want to say that what Frank just said, I respectfully disagree with. And that is, I do think we have excellent personnel at the Bristol County Water Authority. But in private industry, if you shut down a treatment plant, you would have surplus employees. You wouldn't go from twenty-nine employees that were employed when you shut that plant down to thirty-five today. So, and we've just implemented a new computer system, and there's been no savings of personnel as a result of automating, which will not be fully operational until the end of the year, but there's no anticipation that there will be surplus personnel there. So, you know, I look at this as I would look at private industry. I am not certain that the rest of the people on the board are comfortable with that, because they see this as a nonprofit. I don't see it as a nonprofit, I see it as a tax-exempt business.
What I'm happy to know is, I'm glad that you disagree. This council disagrees all the time. We have different points of view on that. What I need to know, for my own comfort, is that at the end of the day, when it comes down to it, that you find some common ground, that you all move forward together to represent Bristol. You don't have to agree on everything, but it sounds like you all want to go the right way, maybe in different ways of getting to the end result. So we all agree we need a redundant water source. We all agree that we have to stop talking about it and get it done, because the day that you had mentioned, Frank, of turning on the water, and that's what you care about, I think I could bring you to the next step and say, when we can't turn on that water-
I've been there. I lived through water buffalo, if you're not in it. I mean, I've been around that long. I mean, so in my lifetime, we had odd-even days for water use, couldn't use, you know, had water buffalo. So I've been there. I don't want to go back.
No, neither do I. So what's the pleasure of this council? I think-
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that upon dates that should be discussed with the other town councils through the clerks and through the BCWA directors, that a tri-town meeting take place in the future.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd just like to make one final remark, if I could. I want to, first of all, thank you all for coming.
Yeah.
And I think it's been very instructive. For one thing, I observe a great variance in opinions and a great variance in passion. And my advice to you would be, don't make the mistake of accepting the status quo. This is a business that you're in. There's no such thing as a nonprofit business, anyway. A business is a business, you've got to break even at least. And this necessity for a second supply is only going to happen if somehow the Water Authority can settle on a single plan and then push it. And it's interesting that that doesn't seem to have happened.
I would disagree with them now.
I mean, it'll happen, it's going to, we could do it tomorrow. Just say, spend the money, Frank and Paul and Gina, we'll start tomorrow. Can't do that. Can't, I can't, I can't do that to my neighbors, to my appointing authority, to the people I represent, I can't do that.
This council thanks you for your time. We appreciate it, we appreciate the efforts and the inputs.
I just want to leave some information to the town clerk, or for you, Mr. Chairman.
It's an inspection about a capital plan for five years, and that's a strategic plan. And this is the operating capital budget next year. And this is an industry. Share that with your colleagues.
Absolutely.
I'd like the new picture.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
So Lou can get them out to us. Can we just send them down to Lou, so he can maybe scan them and get them all to us?
Excellent idea.
Copy, thank you. Lou can get these-
Thank you all again. Lou?
Yep. Okay, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, this is continued from May twentieth. This has to do with the update on the road improvement program. Item H2.
Tony, you want to start off?
Sure, yes. The upgrade is that, right now, we, let me refer to, there's two pieces. One is the Butterworth area, and I actually walked the area with Kevin Aguirre to address some concerns that he had before drafting the RFP. One had to do with drainage, realignment of one of the roads, and the other one was accessibility of public water, town water on River View, to consider that before paving the road and make an offer to the residents there, which I'm in the process of drafting a letter that's going to go to Bristol County Water to meet with the residents, so we can explain what the options are before the road gets paved. But that is now holding up the project, that's working simultaneously as he moves through the RFP, and that is to be publicized and awarded by July twenty-ninth.
With the work done by when?
Once you award the bid, July twenty-ninth, and we hope to start immediately.
So when do we think, though, that work would be completed?
I would say that in August, we should be out there doing work.
So at the end of August? Is it about a month's worth of work? Is it?
It would entail, you have quite a few finger roads off Butterworth, so it's going to take at least a couple of weeks to get through the project there.
The concern I have is, the July twenty-ninth, and we talked about the, a couple setbacks, but even with the couple setbacks, even with my conversation with Mr. Aguirre from Beta, we know that River View is towards the bottom of the phase plan that's taking place this summer. My concern is, I think if we're going to do something, we do it right. And I don't think it should be rushed, and I think there should be options going forward. You and I discussed with the new DPW director, getting on board, we have to brief him, along with Kevin, on this summer's plan. But with that said, even reaching out to BCWA, I had concerns with the timetable, that even if that can't be done this summer, we might have to do it next summer, so it is done right. Meaning the timeframe of the months, and when the plants open and close. If BCWA isn't on board until November, why are we going to do River View? Like you said, we can kind of maybe go a little and talk about, at the end of the summer, adding another road, and then going back to that road next summer. That's just my opinion, you know, as one colleague. I think the timeline is something that has to be set forth with this program, just to convey for the constituents, like we say. And going forward, after this summer, I think we have to draft a bond referendum-
I agree.
-for the next election.
I agree.
And drafting that bond referendum, and contingent with the preliminary ten-year plan that's in front of us, Tony, which we know realistically will change, but on a multi-year level, we know how we can allocate the funds that the voters approve, and we have a timeline going forward with Beta, or whoever gets the RFP, and keep the improvement plan going for our town. And that's just the concern.
I agree a hundred percent with you, and as you all know, Kevin McBride, who will be our new director, his strength is actually civil engineering and drainage. I mean, road infrastructure, road construction, and drainage, that's one of his strengths. So that definitely should be one of the individuals that will assist greatly with, precisely with future plans and how do we move forward, plan of action.
And just one, sorry, Tony, one side note that we discussed, that I just, before we end this, Diane, through community development, is there will be, I know there's discussion through planning and zoning for a development on the top of Butterworth, and we just need to keep the communication going, because, you know, I know you're going to get to it, Tony, but I think it ties in here because of the frustration with I-3, with the administrators' gender item of, a lot of people probably see National Grid, you know, tearing up half roads. And going forward, we have to be more stringent once we get this program going with curb cuts and road cuts and new developments.
To that end, we've had multiple discussions about needing to update our ordinances. Our ordinances right now do not require National Grid and others, we shouldn't pick on National Grid directly, but anybody who digs a hole in our road has got a very beige ordinance right now with us. They can pretty much do what they want. If they put something on top of it, and they come back and they make it a little bit smoother, that's pretty much as far as we take it. That's got to change. We need our roads, when, whether they were fixed six years ago, sixteen years ago, or six days ago, they need to be brought up to the level that they were. They cannot be six months' worth of Gibson Road, for example. Driving down Gibson Road is being on a crater of a moon. I don't live there, I just happened to go down there recently. It's a great example. This cannot be allowed. We need to bring our ordinance up to what the state is, and as the state changes theirs and improves it, so does ours, because we'll follow their state guidelines. There's a whole multitude of ordinance that we're, I know that we all are looking at those, but that one, we need to do yesterday, because our roads are a mess in a lot of places, and some of it has to do with roadwork and, excuse me, improvements that have been made, improvements to infrastructure, but not necessarily the road itself. I think it's unimproved roads, to be quite honest.
And lastly, I know we're going to have a meeting with Kevin, and I thank you for making me part of, you know, this program with you and the DPW director in Beta, but also, it's been talked about, but I think when Kevin comes, past Director Galuska and I have reached out, and there's the state program, and you know the one I'm talking about, pothole killers? I think, to your concern of trying to blend that in with the road program and see an alternative, to see if that's an option to address our potholes, and put it in front of our colleagues, and see the cost, and see if it's worth it with a presentation.
And just a couple more points, and the other one is Blue Boulevard, I just want to show our residents, that's also part of, it will be out for an RFP, because I know quite a few folks have been very concerned, and I've driven the road, and in fact, we addressing some of the major potholes right now, to make sure that it's passable and safe for people to travel there. So we're addressing that piece. To the end of the National Grid, I agree a hundred percent, not just, let's not pick on National Grid, but just overall, any contractor that does work in our roads, I agree a hundred percent, we need to improve as to how we monitor that and how they repair the roads. To the National Grid's end, they actually are making the wrong right, as was already pointed out, they've done some half roads, and others, they're actually going to be doing curb-to-curb.
Very good.
There is about three roads that they will be doing precisely that. I believe National, Gibson is actually one of the roads for the future that will be addressed by National Grid as well. So what we've been doing is, the town's been partnering up with National Grid and take advantage while they're doing some of these roads. Unfortunately, we've only been able to do one, that it's now going to do curb-to-curb, and not the half roads that we're seeing out there.
My earlier question about timeline, is, I look back at Ed's agenda item here, and this dated, his first question on this was January seventh, and we're in the middle of June now. So that's why I say, we need to move, we spent a lot of time with BCWA, talking about inaction. This is in our complete control. We need to take steps so we can move forward and start talking about something else and drive down nice, smooth roads, so.
I think we have the right person to guide us in that direction, especially when it comes to roads and drainage.
So Ed, what's your, what's your pleasure? Is there more discussion, or what's your-
I think we could postpone this for at least a couple of meetings, because there's a lot of communication that has to take place, and like Tony said, the bid will be going out July twenty-ninth. Again, I was hoping for the beginning of June.
Well, don't forget, we have to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but we have to advertise, there is a period for advertisement, and by the time the bids get awarded, so it should be no later than twenty-ninth.
Tony, I know the DOT is coming down to paint the red, white, and blue stripes. Are they going to be doing any road repair, too, while they're down here?
No. DOT will simply, all they charge is to do the lines, the striping.
Maybe we can have them use a lot of paint.
In some areas, yes, they could really, you know, pile up a little extra.
So Ed, not our July eighth meeting, but our-
Closer to the end of July, or the beginning of August, yes, thank you.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
I just have one quick question, Tony.
Please.
On the half roads that National Grid is doing, I know at some point you had talked about maybe seeing if we could work together with them, so we could get the whole road done while it was being done. done while it was being done, and I've noticed a lot of the half roads being prepared. Is there any movement on that? Because it seems to be like a reasonable idea for us to go forward that way.
Yes, the only one road I was able to get, to get them to move on, and that was Mon Hope Avenue. So actually, that was basically the worst of the roads as I drove through them. The others, I mean, it would certainly be great to get them all done because we could get a longer life out of it rather than come back in 10 years and say, oh, no, we've got half a road to worry about.
But I'm talking about with our, like, to split the cost with them, is that a possibility? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what happened.
Is that still on the table to do that, or are they just moving forward with the half road project?
With the ones that are currently done, there's not a whole lot, actually, they were supposed to be paving them today. There is, and I'm glad you're mentioning that because the striping and the road paving, we have to be very cautious. There's two roads off Hope Street that we have, we may not be able to do them until after the 4th because what happens is DOT has painted the lines. If the trucks are driving through those lines with the marks, with the asphalt marking, they actually could do quite a pretty nasty job on those lines. So that's going to be on hold. I believe it's Fort Hill and I can't think of the other street, but there's two streets off Hope Street. They may, they may, they will be on hold until after the 4th.
Ed, our next meeting is, sorry, after the 8th would be July 29th, which is what Tony suggested that RFP would go up. Man, it's suggested to go to August 19th?
They will be awarded by then.
Awarded by then?
Yes.
Do you want it on that day or the 19th?
Yeah.
On the 19th? Okay, so the 29th. So we have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you may, you did mention, and I wrote in my notes, that what I perceived as an immediate need for a consideration of preparation of a bond referendum. Would it be also a good idea to refer that now to the solicitor so that we're not rushing around at the last minute to do that?
Spectacular idea.
Yes. I amend my motion.
Well, a whole new motion would be fine.
There's your new motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
Okay. Not that I want to slow anything down, okay, but anyway, the next item is continued from May 20th, and this has to do with the petition of Donna Jean Castro, who is requesting council consideration for a no parking space in front of her residence.
Chief, I think you have a?
I would move that we sign the request in consequence of the recommendation of the administrator and?
I think, I think the chief actually has an update for us.
Yes, I just spoke to Mrs. Castro on the way out, and she's asked that she meet with me, and I think I've explained to her what our best plan of action moving forward with. So I would ask that either receiving file, or I can forward you a report at your next meeting telling you what the outcome is. I think we'll be able to resolve this.
So we can refer this to the chief and the administrator? Is that what you're suggesting, Lou?
Sounds good.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Some move.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, the next one we withdraw on, the next one has to do with previously discussed so-called e-commerce safe zone, which was discussed at the last meeting, and I believe there was supposed to be some report forthcoming on the location, et cetera.
Chief, it's back to you.
Yes, and I would stop by thanking Councilwoman Perella, who kind of pushed this forward, and I know there was the support of the entire council. As I said to you back at that meeting, I assigned an officer to contact a couple other departments that have it in place to hear the pros and cons before we implemented it. And I could tell you that we've implemented it, and we've had some positive statements on it. I can tell you that they gave me a printout, and there were several hits from several people saying that they should put this in Portsmouth, Middletown, everywhere else. So I agree, it was definitely worth our while.
Nice job, Mary.
We'll just monitor.
This is, it's very professional looking, the signs look great, and it's, thank you very much for getting it done so quickly as well. And I think it is a good idea and gives people just a sense of safety, and I was surprised that, I don't even know, I'm not a big Facebook person, so I'm not really, I don't know that I realized the police department had its own Facebook page, but you got a lot of hits on this particular.
We did, and they were positive, and again, we waited a little bit of time just to make sure that we wanted to do this the right way and.
And have there been people coming in and using the parking lot?
Yes, they are.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And will you be rolling this out with like a press release type of thing or?
Yes, we have it flashing through our webpage, and we'll put it out eventually to the local paper so everyone will know. Word travels quick, as you can see.
I can see, I'll tell you, the old-fashioned way, right, in the newspaper. It's great, thank you very much, chief.
What's your motion on this one, Mary?
I think it's to, what would it be, just receiving file with thanks to the police department for getting it done as quickly as they did.
Thank you, and I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Nice job, Mary.
The next item is item I-1 from the administrator regarding the Second Annual Bristol Harbor Festival. And I believe there is a letter attached seeking certain permissions from the council.
Mr. Chairman, this, as you can see, this is the Second Annual for the Harbor Fest, and yes, on item number, well, on the attachment, paragraph number two does refer to serving or to include beer and wine as one of the items for this, for this year's. This is a request from the committee. I believe there's someone here from the committee that would like to address the council on this, and the Harbor Master, I believe is here as well, they can fill in.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Louis Fratirelli, 12 Vernon Avenue.
Thank you.
What we're having is beer and wine during the mealtime, which was around 4:30, and our second sitting's at 6:30. Under the tent, we have, we're going to have police detail and a licensed bartender. So it's a short amount of time, just during the, when we're serving the meal, the Little Neck Boyle.
In here it says, and this is the question that I, one of the questions that I had, it said during the restaurant stuffy competition, and then when I looked at the time, it looks like that starts about an hour, about an hour before the first seating of the Little Neck Boyle.
Yes, we're still adjusting our times for everything.
But you're looking for the liquor to be served during the stuffy competition and the dinner, right? That's, that's what it says here.
Yes, well, it's, if we're going to move the times around, we're not exactly.
But you're, you're serving the alcohol with the dinner?
Yes, with the dinner, that's the plan.
It's a compliment with the meal, correct?
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the dinner part, and I actually see this differently than the prior discussion. I know Ed had made a comment about treating everybody, everything the same. I see this different because this was, it's a much smaller park, and it really is taken up by this event, you know, that particular day. So I don't really have a problem with, with it being, with the alcohol being served during the dinner. I do have a little bit of a concern about it being served, when I first read this, you know, when I first read the letter, then I went to the next page and saw the times. You know, when I first saw the stuffy competition, because last year you had that early in the afternoon, like, I do have a concern about alcohol being there for a long period of time as events go on. So I think if that competition's like maybe a half an hour or an hour before, that might be a possibility, or else just to limit it to the dinner. That's my thoughts about it.
I understand. Well, the blessing starts at noon, and then through the day, we have different events, music all day.
Right.
So it is pushed, and it's right under the tent.
Yeah.
And we have volunteer staff that will have around, that all have, we're doing red shirts for our volunteers this year, so it's confined to one spot, just under the tent.
But I don't think that you should have like alcohol floating around down there all afternoon. I guess that's.
No, it's not going to be mealtime.
Just the mealtime.
Yes.
I would, I'm not opposed to this, I certainly would want a recommendation from, chief from your department on, on how many officers are there, and egress and ingress, and all the things that, all the issues that we expressed earlier about Cold State Park, talking about, you know, its appropriateness, there are kids around there, this is downtown, this is in one of our parks, all the things that we've talked about still exist. So again, I'm not opposed to it, but I would want to make sure that you are comfortable with their plan to serving it and keeping, cordoning things off, such and so forth.
I agree 100%, and I will let you know that Deputy Contendee did have a conversation with the Harbor Master, and they kind of laid everything down on what would take place and how, but I will assure you that that will be forwarded through the town administrator to the council within the next council meeting.
Okay. And I agree also with Mary that liquor, beer and wine, would be only available when food is being served and not throughout the whole course of the day, so.
I'm in full support of this event. I'm not going to be a hypocrite, Greg, but I did state my concern of all these events coming. I support all the events, but I just want us to be mindful of, you know, and it's a great, you know, success, it's going to be even greater, but to Councilwoman Perella's point is the tent, you know, maybe the police are going to make you put a rope or something because that way people aren't leaving an area, you know, it's designated for the alcoholic purposes, and then you're having your detail. So these are the perimeters. But again, I believe that this is a community effort on behalf of the town of Bristol. My question is, will the liability be coming from the auspices of our inter-local trust from our own town of Bristol to cover any liability?
I think so, because it's a.
Andy?
Yeah, it's a town-sponsored event.
Yes, because it's a town-sponsored event, event it would. The only way would be is if you hired a caterer who had their own license.
And that's why I just want to make a discussion of the difference, especially maybe to the public, is events that have caterers, they fall under their license, so it's their responsibility or a certain entity. I think this is the first of uncharted waters for the town of Bristol to start, you know, contradicting their own ordinances when it comes to alcoholic beverages. So it's, it's almost, as it was stated today, I think there has to be some thought behind this before, I know for myself.
See, I agree with that. As you know, that we've had lots and lots of conversations about outside dining, lots of conversations about outside alcohol on the sidewalk, way different than this and similar situations to this because we're talking about three, four, five tables, multiple people who are certified in serving drinks and looking out for their interests of their restaurant because we're watching them too. When they get large like this, we get concerned, and it doesn't mean, we all support it, and I hear support here, it's just that this needs to be, to use an earlier statement, belt and suspenders. We can't kind of make sure this is good. We have to be a model citizen and show what it is that the town can do on this to make sure that it, everything is super safe.
Just to add, Greg, you know I'm in full support, and I, I'm sitting here as a council, I wear my council hat, but my concern is liability for the residents in the town of Bristol, and that's why I'm conveying what I'm conveying. Not to do so, I don't think I would be doing my job, so.
Understandable.
Can I, can I ask another question that is, to me is a liability question, but it's not around alcohol, and that is the home cook stuffy competition. And, you know, one of the downsides, and I mean, I don't have any answer to this, but one of the things that popped into, into my mind, and it's something that we wrestle with, like where I work as well, of having like potlucks and stuff like that, is, you know, how do you ensure that this is prepared properly, that the temperatures are correct, that, you know, there's some pretty strict guidelines in terms of restaurants and others. Now, I'm not saying that a restaurant is following all those guidelines when they're bringing something out to this, but when something's being prepared at a home, you don't really know. And so I'm just curious if you've given any thought to that or, and what the liability might be to that. I don't know that there is a law specifically about that or not. I mean, there are some that are out there, Andy. I know in terms of certain establishments, like, you know, like even the social clubs, things like that. And I know, you know, you'll notice like all the church festivals, they no longer make, you know, in years past, everybody made their meatballs and brought them in and put them in one big pot. They no longer do that, they all prepare it on-site with somebody who's maybe a certified food safety handler. So I just wanted to raise that and hear if you thought of anything about that.
Mary, we were talking about that at the last committee meeting, and we're digging into that, the whole legality side of it, only because, you know, chili cook-offs, I've entered many of them, or barbecue contests, it's, you know, it's all the, it's all the same, so we're trying to get those ground rules and to make sure, if it's not feasible to do, then we won't do it. We don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. But with, with the non-restaurant stuffy competition, we had a lot of people last year, a lot of home cooks that wanted to participate, that, that won't be like the restaurant stuffy competition where we had them for people just to come out, make a donation, and.
Oh, that's more like a competition, like, you're going to have some judges who will be sampling that?
Five judges.
It's not going to be available to the public? Oh, okay.
No, unlike, unlike the restaurant stuffy competition last year, where we had the five restaurants, they came down and, and they put a couple hundred out extra.
Right.
You know, and that was, and, you know, we were talking about limiting the amount of people because you can't have, you know, five judges eat 50 stuffies, so.
Right. I think, I think that does make a difference, I think, you know, because I, I don't think that was clear that that wasn't going to be for like public consumption.
No, it'd just be, you know, five judges, and if you want to volunteer, we'll put you on the panel.
Well, you could make a man versus food competition, maybe he, that person might eat fifty.
I love stuffies, I love stuffies. Stuffies are one of my favorite things.
So would it seem appropriate that we would continue this to our next meeting of July 8th and get some clarity and from, from the chief about, and then I suppose we would also need clarity from actually both chiefs, I should say that, from both the fire chief and the police chief about safety, egress, ingress, and all the things that go along with this.
So I think it's a good evening, Mr. Chairman, of all these agenda items all at once tonight, that way we all can have a thoughtful process, so.
Well, this is certainly going to be a good event. It was a great event last year and.
And all the money this year, this raise is going to go to Rockwell Park to, to do some fixing up, making, that park is so used during the day, you know, from spring on, so that's what we want to give the money to Walder this year to do something to the park, so.
That's awesome.
And it's packed with activities throughout the afternoon, so it's going to be a lot of fun.
We have bands from high, the high school kid, a couple of high school kids have bands to Andre Arsenal, who plays around town, and a couple other people, so it's going to be nice.
Sounds great. Thank you. Can I have a motion? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the Harbor Festival Committee referral to the July 8th meeting?
For input, if you wouldn't mind.
For input from the chief of police and the fire chief on the alcohol concerns.
We have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is from Councilman Harrisoff regarding Harbor Matters.
I'm the council liaison to the Harbor Commission, and I don't get to attend every meeting, but when I do, I'm very impressed by the scope of their interests and by their enthusiasm to make things better. I know they've had very good cooperation with our Harbor Master, and so I bring to you one of a number of items that were discussed, and that is that now that the State Street Pier has been largely completed and very significant improvements, there's continued interest by the commission in the area that is north of the State Street Pier. As you all know, that includes a ramp that is very much used by both fishermen and recreational people. And in addition to that, there are some ideas about other utilizations of that space. And so the commission has asked me to bring forward, as you see in the second page of this memorandum and the third page, a quote for an engineering study of those spaces for which an amount of $740 would be required were they to be able to accept Mr. Cornwell's service quotation. So I know Mr. Dolan's is here from the committee, and if you have some further questions about the efficacy of this idea, of the course, maybe he would be willing to answer those questions.
To my colleague, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you brought it to our attention. Diane, I just had a quick question regards to, if you can explain how this would fit into the strategic plan of everything going on. I know we've got the Marine Center going on, we have a lot of different areas of the harbor being developed. How does this really fit in with the full plan? Maybe, maybe it's a, I'm just trying, I guess to, really, my question is, would this be a high priority right now or a lower priority for later on? I mean.
Well, I, just, so you are aware, I did meet with the Harbor Master. When the request first came through my office, I referred it to him, I felt that he needed to have the input on it as well. And we did meet with the town administrator and discuss all of the projects that are on the list, and Greg can speak a little bit more to that, but it is not, I mean, it's basically, it's not, it's not, it's not high on the priority list at the moment.
Go ahead, Greg.
We have other, other projects that are more priority.
Sure. Thank you.
I think eventually, you know, we have the agreement now with Mr. Adams on this. It'd be a great project down the road, but I think we all want to get the Marina put in first. Once the Marina's put in, then we could see how that affects the southwest fetch. So to spend the money to design something now that might change in the future, it's not on my high priority list to get done down.
I'm glad, I'm glad that you said that, because I think that this is a good idea, but as has been pointed out, I think priority-wise, putting in the Marina first makes the most sense. Again, I don't think this is a bad idea, but I think we should focus on those things first, and that's my personal opinion.
Well, would I, can I just ask the clerk to clarify, would it be that you would go forward with the plan, and so you have a working document with the plan and, like, the specs and the costs or whatever, you know, who says it's gonna provide a budget with the detail, the floats, and so that we know where to put that in as a priority because we know the cost? Or would we not go forward with any of the design or study at all?
See, I think it makes the most sense, and what I heard you say was, was put the Marina in first and then see what that affects, that area, and then make steps to...
Yeah.
You know, the preliminary plans we have for the new Marina goes out 405 feet, it comes up 355 feet. So that goes out into the fairway now, we have to adjust a little bit, but that should knock a lot of that southwest fetch, if you're down by the harbor today, you would see how bad it was.
Hey Greg, you gotta speak English on that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
You started saying things that...
Yeah, we didn't...
Yeah, so...
Okay, the way the wind blew today.
There you go.
It was blowing about around 30, 35 knots, it's been like that for the last two weeks. So with the, with the putting the Marina in, with the heavy-duty concrete piers, with the wave actuator on the bottom, that'll, that'll break that swell. So with that swell being broken, it'll give us the possibility to make that, maybe wrap it around, maybe work with whoever owns the property at the time, same street landing or whoever, whoever that will be, maybe we can do something bigger and better there. So to put it, you know, I just don't have it high on my list of where we're gonna go right now. I think it's a great project, but I'd rather wait, I'd rather put the money into the Marina. And I think the 100 people on the list right now, you know, with boats bigger than 25 feet, would wanna, would want that Marina to be put in, so...
Greg, how do you see that Marina preparation going? Are we doing as much as we might do to move it forward?
We, I'm gonna start back up after the 4th of July, you know, we had a lot of damage down there this year, we're still catching up on from the ice and the snow and a couple electrical problems that we've been having, so we're gonna start trying to get that out and get an RFP together to go back out for, you know, some cost estimates on it.
Well, I think the council would appreciate that happening sometime after the 4th in conjunction with the Harbor Commission, and this would be a great boon to the waterfront if we can get that project done.
I agree, I think it'd be great down there. You know, I mean, we, there's other projects we're doing too, so it's...
To that end, maybe you could plan on giving us an update on the 29th, that's the end of July, if you're...
Yep, no problem.
That'd be enough time to see what's going on and offer some possible solutions.
Sounds good.
So you just basically, this should just be received and filed and come back up whenever you all want to bring it back up again? Is that it, pretty much?
Works for me.
Is that okay with you?
Works for me.
Table it type of thing?
That sounds like a very good plan, and give them time after the 4th to do it.
Okay. So we're looking for a receive and file motion on this?
Uh, so moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second? We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
We've been, the commission's been discussing this...
Would you state your name for the record, please? I know who you are, and we do, but go ahead.
Dominic Franco, with Chairman of the Harbor Commission.
Thank you, sir.
We've been discussing this dock situation down on State Street for three, four years. The committee voted it down last month because it's not a priority, and there's too much work to be done, it's not just build the docks there, there's more work than it looks like. It's gotta be dredged, if you see the pictures that you got, you know what's over there, there's nothing there, it's gotta be cleaned and dredged, and you're not talking small dollars there. But I just wanted to know that the Harbor Commission is against it. I don't even know how we got up to the town council now.
This is what I was thinking, like, how did it get here?
Well, it sounds like it's a receive and file at this point, the prior, we'll certainly consider it once the Marina is built and see what possibilities exist at that point.
When, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, item I three, the town administrator provides several updates.
Okay, on the first item, the Tonya Brook, as you can see, we're able to meet with the last of the 10 residents that were being impacted by the realignment. He actually, he is a college student, we didn't realize that, but he got us, came in, and he was very willing to listen and very excited about the change because it does impact his property as it stands now. Going forward, it goes to the edge of the property, which allows him much more use of the space and less potential flooding to his own house.
So all on board then?
Yeah, so we've got all ten on board. So Debbie and Sad, Beta continues to survey now all of the properties to draw the borders or the perimeters so that they can begin to draft the construction easements to go out.
Great news.
In addition to that, Diane and I have been having a couple of conversations about procuring funding, and there was a grant that came through just recently. We were actually, you know, toying around with the idea of the EDA as one, a pre-application, which we, we talking about that, as well as, there is one most recent, I can't recall, I just received it, and I can share that at the next meeting. So we need to look at those and see how we can begin to procure the funding as we doing all this other work simultaneously. The RBCs, some of you had the opportunity to go to the water pollution to the plant there and see three of them being installed. Well, under the current contract, we're able actually to negotiate with the contractor to lower from 220,000 to 197,000 per RBC, allowing us to actually go ahead and be able to install seven more for a total of 10, which are in great need. So we actually gonna be able to do that.
I drove by there this afternoon and noticed a truck waiting to put another one in.
There it is.
So it's spectacular.
I think that's terrific, you've been able to negotiate that down, but actually, we also have done some other ones a few years back.
That's correct, yes. Don't forget, we have 24 altogether.
Twenty-four.
So right now, we've done...
Have we done nine?
Nine, with 10 more right now, we'll be up to 19.
That's wonderful.
That's great, that's great news, yeah.
So we moving along with that. The website, the Civic Ready, which was one of the components that we were gonna pick up for $3,200, we no longer have to do that, thanks to the state, they have actually signed off with Cudret, and we will be one of three pilot communities on the bubble.
That's great news.
So, you know, we moving forward so we can save $3,200 and yet receive the service that we anticipated we could. The paving, I already shared with you about National Grid, so there is no further discussion on that one. And the OT, as you know, is tripping the lines. And hopefully we'll see the red, white, and blue very soon, where we can be proud and ready to march on just about another month, you know, we'll be marching down the parade route.
Less than a month.
Yes, now it's less than a month.
Yes, it is.
So that's why I have phenomenal.
Thank you, this is great news. Can I have a motion to receive and file?
Still moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, item K1, the periodic report from Alan Klepper of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And also, the periodic report is provided by Stacy Carter, K2.
Thank you, Stacy, motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Three separate executive sessions coming up, and now the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
Let's see, I had a few things for this evening, and I'm gonna pull them up for us right now. First, last week, last Sunday, I went to Matthew DeWolf's Eagle Scout Court of Honor. If you hear, we talk about that a lot, it's because we have, I think it's 500% the norm. Typically, there's about 5% Eagle Scouts per Cub Scout troop, and we have over 20%. It's impressive, it not only speaks to the leadership of the Cub Scouts, but to the individual and to their families and what they do. It's absolutely impressive, and it's always a pleasure to do that. I wrote for and received for the Town of Bristol a legislative grant for $2,000, we should have it within four to six weeks or so, and that money is so we can get TVs in here, so we can actually have presentations, and it's a small step to a much larger step, obviously, with getting us up to digital speed. Lou, the clerk, is the chairman of that committee to do the improvements in here, so I'll be working closely with him and others to help us be able to present ourselves and the information in front of us that much better.
That's great news.
There's lots of great steps, I know, and I don't know if you've heard us talking about this, but Lou and Jen have been working on using an iPad as opposed to all of this paper here. Our school committee does that and has a great success with it. Huge benefits to each one of us is that you'll be able to reference back without talking to anybody. You'll have everything that you had in front of you. So Lou's making a lot of steps on that, it's a lot of work, and it's not gonna be for a while, but I'm very happy to be part of that as it moves forward. We had the high school graduation over the weekend, and the valedictorian of the 2015 class was Burke O'Brien, saladictorian was Ry Webb, am I saying that right? Ry Webb? And Burke is gonna be going to Brown University, and Mr. Webb, because I don't want to say his first name incorrectly again, is going to Colgate University. What's that?
Ms. Webb.
Is it Ms. Webb? I so sorry.
Riz.
Riz Webb, got it, thank you. So there was 224 in the class, and I asked the superintendent for anything specific that he would share that was noteworthy, and he said that this class has been one of the most impressive with test scores, for example, they've had the highest average kneecap and SAT scores, 86.1 pursuing post-secondary education, that's absolutely impressive. Exceptionally high percentage of activities involved in athletics and school activities, and the class personality itself is just absolutely off-the-charts impressive in where they're going. I bring this to everyone's attention because I think we all knew this here, but it's worth saying again, we have a phenomenal school system, and we have phenomenal kids, and we have phenomenal parents, and we have phenomenal teachers, and we should be very proud of what's happening. There is nothing that affects us more in both our future and financially and property values than our schools. So I thought that was absolutely wonderful, and I wanted to share that with everybody. I wasn't able to attend, but I asked the superintendent to share that with us, so that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Mr. Sweeney?
In an effort to educate people on recycling and keep lifting our rates, I gave a tip last council meeting, I'm giving another tip tonight, and it concerns these little guys, the plastic bags, you see them all over, they're in trees, they're in the water, they're all over the place. Well, many people want to do the right thing with them, and they put them in a blue recycling bin, but unfortunately, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corp. does not recycle these bags, so don't throw them in the blue bin, because they could call on the machines, they actually jam them up, they have to cut them out. And also, don't bag your recyclables up and tie them up because we need to leave them open in the bin so they can be used and counted as recycling. So I just wanted to leave that little tip. So what do you do with your recycling bag? Bring it to the supermarket, bring it to Walgreens, there's, they can recycle those bags there. I think they even have one at Rite Aid and all the various spots. So that's my tip of the night, if you have any questions, you can get ahold of me. Also, I just wanted to wish everybody a very healthy and happy 4th of July. I know we're not having another council meeting before then, so be safe. And this weekend's the British Car Show, so go out to the Explore Bristol website, all the details are out there, it's supposed to be 100-something vintage cars, it's gonna be a really great time. I think it starts Friday, it starts Friday, Saturday, and runs through Sunday, so check that one out, and that's it, have a great night.
And if I may, I forgot two things. Flag Day is this Sunday, and also the Fireman's Parade is this Sunday, I apologize for not mentioning those. Thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I was a few minutes late, and I did want to extend my condolences to you, chief, and to patrolman Richard Gene George's family. I was so sad to hear that, yesterday was when I heard it. I kept hearing bits and pieces on the news, you know, that there was an officer, and then finally heard the confirmation, and then I think Nathan, it was yesterday that you sent the email. So I'm very, very sorry. Anytime I ever saw him, he was always a very lovely guy, very polite, and so it's just very, very sad. And then I just wanted to wish happy graduation and congratulations to all the graduates here in Bristol. So we've had many, our high school that just recently graduated this past weekend, all the colleges, and then all of the kids too that are making a transition from, you know, eighth grade into ninth, or, you know, or kindergarten into, kindergarten into first grade, or whatever. So that's, it's an exciting time for everyone. I wanted to wish all of my colleagues and all, everyone out there, Happy Father's Day, those of you who are fathers, look around, I think most of you are, I think that's a week from this weekend. And also to extend a happy 4th of July to everyone, and as was just mentioned, the kickoff for that is Flag Day, which is Sunday, it's 6 o'clock, I believe, right, Lou?
Yes.
6 o'clock at the, on the Town Common. And so you can follow, you can come after you've gone to the parade and other festivities, well, that's the wrong word, the memorial service down at Rockwell Park for the Fireman's Sunday, so that's all I have, I think.
Mr. Stewart?
I also, chief, to your department and to the family of Richard Gene George, my condolences on behalf of myself and my family. Also, as my colleague stated, this is our busy time of the year as a town, we should be very proud because we have so much going on, just to be mindful to residents that you should take advantage of all these festivities because a lot goes into it, and we thank our 4th of July committee for all their efforts and hard work to prepare this, and it takes a year to do so. So pick up the schedule, go to a concert, come downtown, go to the Fireman's Memorial Flag Day, there's the whole list on their website and also on one of the pamphlets you could get around town. Also, I'd like to congratulate the year's Hattie Brown recipient, Susan Donovan. We congratulate her, that was a great pick. Susan has done a lot for this community, and we're very happy for her. Also, the chairman mentioned Matthew DeWolf, but also this past Sunday, we can't forget Brendan Bobozer, another Eagle Scout, who was commended for his efforts and awarded the Eagle Scout amongst us with the colleagues. Also, congratulations to this year's Miss Fourth, Jessica Teller, and Little Miss Fourth, Lena Martin, but also all the contestants for all their hard work and efforts to go after that title because it's very prestigious to hold in this town. I'd like to just welcome our new Director of Public Works, Kevin McBride, I believe his day was starting today, so we welcome him. And other than that, I think a lot has been said. Again, congratulations to all the graduates, and thank you, Mike Davis, and our Sergeant of Arms, Archie Martins, and everybody, have a happy 4th and a happy Father's Day. Thank everybody for coming out tonight, everybody tuning in at home, and be safe and have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Harrisaw?
I'd just like to add to Jim's announcement about the English Car Festival. That's starting right now, gonna go on through the rest of this week, and well scheduled to end just before we have our Flag Day ceremony on Sunday. It's gonna be pretty terrific, they're gonna bring well over 100 cars, some will be very valuable, some will be venerable, and there's huge enthusiasm amongst the people that have that hobby of these traditional automobiles, and it's kind of interesting that this one concentrates on English vehicles. So I recommend everybody get out and enjoy it, there'll be a big parade through town, a lot of events, and a lot of it's gonna be around Cold State Park. And it promises to possibly be a repetitive thing in the coming years if it's successful this year. And since almost anything we do in Bristol is successful, I think you're gonna see this perpetuated in other years as well. I was this week down at Independence Park quite a lot for different reasons, and that, of course, is one of the most agreeable parks that we have, perhaps because of its... of course, is one of the most agreeable parks that we have, perhaps because of its spaciousness from Big Oval, but also because it's right adjacent to the, to the harbor. However, at the present time, we sort of have a peak hole through the middle. Well, I'd like to recommend to the council and to the administrator and to anybody who was involved with this, that we remove some of the hedges, particularly south of where the flag poles are, so that our citizens who are down there, either for a nice sunny day like today or for the Fourth of July concerts, can better enjoy the water. We could widen it both north and south, but I think to widen it south for maybe 70 or 100 feet would be the most desirable thing, and to make that change would not be expensive as just a bunch of hedges that could be taken down in company with the area that already is open to the sea. So, I'd like to suggest that that be taken under consideration by the town administrator. And of course, we are now in the finest month of Bristol life, Fourth of July coming up, and I say to everybody, make the most of it, enjoy it, be safe, be enthusiastic, get out with the family, and have a great time. And I think we're going to have a fine Fourth, and I hope it all goes well for everybody. Well, now, in conclusion, I'd like to finish my practice. It's always been a little trouble from my colleagues. I want to read you Rule 33 and 35 from George Washington's Rules of Civility and Decent Behavior in Company and Conversation. This one is quite interesting. It says, he says, "They that are in dignity or in office have in all places precedency; but whilst they are young," as we all are young, "they ought to respect those that are their equals, both in birth or other qualities, though those others may not have public charge." Well, I think we do that. I think we show a lot of respect for anybody that enters this room. And in addition to that, I'll read a short one, which I think our chairman will appreciate when he is running these good meetings. George Washington says, "Let your discourse with men of business be short and comprehensive."
Very nice.
Wisdom from the father of our country.
So, Paul, I have to just say that I was looking for a gift for an eighth-grade transition, you know, because I don't like to call it graduation, and I was thinking, what could I get? And I thought about that book. I didn't exactly know, so I asked this woman at a bookstore if she had it, and they had one that was a younger person's version, a kid's version, but for, you know, middle school appropriate and, and high school. And, and so, I actually have that all gift wrapped.
Well, that's, that's wonderful.
It was about manners. I might have, so I don't know if there's more than one book. It was just like, you know, Becoming a Gentleman and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah. And it's, you know, it's quite interesting. That was written in the mid-1700s, when George Washington was not quite 16, but it's totally applicable in 2015.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And town administrator agenda items.
Actually, Mr. Harrisaw, the suggestion for Independence Park, Walter and I will put our heads together and come back to the council...
That'd be great.
...with some recommendation, though. We'll do that. Congratulations is in order to the Division III High School softball girls. They won the state championship, and they did an excellent job, so they congratulate, congratulated for that. The other piece is tomorrow, 11:30. We have the Portuguese flagging, raising, the raising of the Portuguese flag tomorrow, 11:30. This week actually was, the day of Portugal was celebrated throughout the week, actually. They had the opening ceremonies Friday of last week at the State House, and this past weekend, they were pretty busy at the Plaza, Kennedy Plaza as well. There were a couple of events, and what they've done is they've asked different communities throughout the state to do the raising of the flag throughout the week. So, it'll be our turn tomorrow, 11:30. We'll be Maud and Glad. We'll have light refreshments, precisely that, light refreshments available here in the town hall afterwards, but look forward to that. So, amanhã vai ser a continuação do Dia de Portugal, como sabem, e às onze e meia, nós vamos ir queira a bandeira portuguesa fora aqui da nossa Câmara Municipal. Em caso que seja interessado, todos são bem-vindos. I just welcomed everyone. That's why I said, okay. Didn't say anything bad.
As far as we know, right?
Yes. Have you...
He did. I'll tell you, he did.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Chief would keep me in check on that one, and I know some of you do understand quite a bit more than you, than you show. And with the firefighters' Memorial Day this Sunday, just to sort of fill in a little bit more, the 11:30, there's the Mass at St. Mary's, then follows with the parade at 1:00 that will form at the corner of High and...
Church.
In church. Thank you. And so, it should be a great day, and happy Fathers to all. Good night.
I'd request a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 42-46-5A2 litigation regarding Hope Worth Association versus the Town of Bristol, also known as the Clipper Way case.
So moved.
Executive?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you just finish?
He's going to, but we were already there, and I didn't want to stop.
And to remain in session, for executive session pursuant to the same section for the also litigation regarding the Bristol Warren Regional School District litigation.
Anything else before we vote on our...
And also, under the same section litigation, Gendrow versus Town of Bristol.
So moved.
Executive?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Happy Fourth, everybody.